I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you everybody for coming this evening. Can I get the whole ball please?
Councilmember DeGolia?
There.
Councilmember Littres?
Present.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whitmer?
Here.
Mayor Wees?
Here. I'm going to move into item number two, which is presentations, and it looks like we have them. I guess I assume. Show you.
Yes, yes. So this is our proclamation in recognition of our public safety communications personnel. Whereas, the city council, the town of Atherton, along with the entire community would like to honor the contributions of all communications personnel in the public safety arena for their continued efforts to preserve public safety through our 911, non-emergency lines, and dispatch of our police personnel to thousands of calls for service each year across the nation, and whereas each year, the second week of April is dedicated to the men and women who serve as public safety telecommunicators. Whereas, the city council of the town of Atherton would like to declare National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 8th through 14th of this year, which has been set aside so everyone can be made aware of their hard work and dedication, which provides a vital link to the public safety services on which we have come to rely on every day. Thank you to the public safety communications personnel for their commitment to the profession. I'd just like to say, not being a dispatcher, that you wouldn't think in Atherton that it would be very busy in our dispatch center, but it is extremely busy. We have dispatchers, part-time dispatchers that come from much larger agencies, and when you work day shift in Atherton, you have the front counter, you have to field phone calls, you're monitoring alarms, you're getting questions from the officers, and you're monitoring their radio traffic and dispatching them to the various calls, so it really is a thankless job. You see our dispatcher at the front counter, just tell them, let them know you appreciate the hard work they do, because I tell you, I would not want to do it. So, thank you to our dispatchers.
You will appreciate them.
I think Joe, you guys do actually do film for them, so you get a little bit of that experience when the dispatcher wants to take a break for a minute, you guys go in there and see, you get your fill of that.
We do, and that's why we appreciate them so much.
Thank you, Joe. I'm going to open up item number four, which is public comments for any item that's not on the agenda, and I know that I have somebody very special in the audience that wants to walk up to the podium, and it's visible, and it's a...
Dova.
Ah, welcome, come on up.
Hello.
Sometimes I get prompted to somebody, and you're the one.
I'm Isabella Dova, and I'm a resident of Atherton, and I'm in fifth grade at the Sacred Heart School, which is a couple blocks down, and thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I would like to ask to consider our city's celebration of Columbus Day, and ask if you may consider celebrating both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Let me give you a few historical facts to think of. Did you know that Columbus Day, Columbus did not actually discover America, the Native Americans actually did before he ever did? Did you know that Columbus was responsible for displacing or even killing many Native Americans while he was on our continents? Did you know that many cities across America, including San Francisco and Berkeley, now celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the same day as Columbus Day, to celebrate the heritage of our country's indigenous people? I would like to, you could just consider these facts and ask if you would consider changing the holiday name, or maybe doing both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day on the same day, and thank you.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Wow, you did a good job for your first time at the podium.
There's many more opportunities than we have here.
Any other members of the public would like to come up for any item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have the written report before you this evening, and staff present to answer any questions you may have. There were a couple of comments in our one-on-one meetings about trying to adjust the size of some of the images, because when they're smaller, in PD report particularly, when they're smaller, all the dots just kind of meld together, and you can't really see, it looks more like an heat map than an incident map, so we're going to work on that. Staff is also putting together a map of the emergency assembly points, in conjunction with ADAP in Menlo Park Fire District, that'll come out at some point in the future, and the PD is also working on more fine detail around code three for early calling and response lines. Comments that you had in advance, I could then bring you the questions.
Any members from council have any questions for George? Any members of the public would like to comment on the city manager's report? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close it. The one thing I do want to say, George, and to briefly clarify this, I know that we have an active shooter drill coming up on April 9th at Menlo Park. With all the things here are rolling on, can we make sure that we do some release beforehand? Because there's a lot of sensitivity that's going on out in general public, and if they don't know what drills going on, it seems like the news is hitting it, so load up in front and load up during, so that we don't create any more anxiety that everybody is well informed with all of our personnel.
So maybe since you brought that through the chair?
Please.
Just a, what exactly would an active shooter drill look like at one of our schools?
Perfect, Joe.
Which is kind of a little two-minute?
Perfect.
One minute?
Well, okay, so an active shooter drill, which we've done in the past, but this will be the first time they're actually doing it with the fire department, and it'll be the first time we're doing it with more than just a couple role players. We're not going to have a ton of role players, but we will have role players. Some of it's classroom, some of it, we go over protocols, what the county protocols are, we talk about what they're going to be doing for the day, we have a safety briefing, and then it moves on to specific exercises, and those specific exercises are, hey, we're going to work with fire practicing this specific drill, then we're going to move and practice this specific drill, and we'll do a third drill, and what those things are designed, what those are designed to do is, those drills are designed to prepare you for the actual game, the actual scenario, at which point they'll take everything that they learned in those three exercises, they'll put them together for the scenario, and that's what it looks like. And some of it, you know, we can tell the public about, and then there's just a, there's a portion of it that, A, they probably wouldn't be interested in, and B, that we just don't allow them to see just because of tactics, and more so for safety, like if somebody wanted to show up to one of these trainings, depending on how you ran it, there's safety equipment involved, because we're actually shooting projectiles at one another, obviously they're not real, but you have anything from airsoft to simunitions, and so for the safety of the public in mind, we just don't want them anywhere where they could get hit.
Just to go to the mayor's point, though, we got, what are we doing to mitigate the concern that somebody in the public will see this and assume that there's a real incident going on? Is there any risk of that? If it is so, what are we doing to address that risk?
So we send out a notification, we have signs on the location where we're doing it saying police training in progress, and we notify all the other agencies around so that if they have somebody who's on the border, because Menlo School right across the street, you got Menlo Park, you may have somebody that looks out of a balcony and sees a bunch of cops doing a drill, maybe they don't see the sign, they call the police, and we can say, hey, you know what, Menlo Park will tell them that they're having an active shooter drill.
Good, exciting, and it's, we have an AM drill and an AM drill.
Yeah, we have four-hour block in the morning, five-hour block in the afternoon, and we're looking forward to it.
Well, I know that all of us up here are real excited, and you know that there's been quite an effort on the police department's part to set it up, it's a multi-agency task, so it's not as if something occurred and we're reacting to it. We started this about a year ago, to put it in place with all the council support to make sure something didn't happen, so we're very pleased. Thank you, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar, items number eight through 13, are there any members of council that want to pull an item?
Through the chair, I'd like to just make a comment on item number eight, which is the Google of the February 21st meeting minutes.
Perfect. Any other members? Elizabeth, if you'd like to make your...
So my comment is on page six of eight of the February 21st minutes, we talk about the fire services fiscal review, and at the end of this, this call and discussion staff had support of three, well, the minutes read, at least three members of the council, and I'd like to strike at least, I would say, from three members of the council, and they were, like I planned, to direct staff to work with a consultant to inform the task board, because there were two members that were not in favor of that, even though it was not a motion and a, you know, an action item.
That's a simple motion.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, otherwise, I'd like to make a motion to...
Let me, do what?
Right, that does, yeah.
Do you want to ask the question?
Sorry.
I'm just checking.
The one person stopped, so you could...
I stopped.
Either way, I'll do it. Any members of the public would like to pull which item, that was on the consent calendar, eight through 15? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close it, Elizabeth.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar items eight through 13.
Go ahead and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go ahead and move on to the regular agenda, item number 17, providing back, continuing visits stormwater capture facility, crossing the regular, where should just... Oh, sorry, I, you know what?
You just went straight to it, didn't you?
No. We take these apart, and you get excited, and we're glad I don't know how to help up here. I apologize, and I know everybody's going to be honest, well, that's really good, because I was here for that too. I am, we're going to move on to the public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing, item number 14, which is the ordinance of the council of town of Atherton authorizing an amendment to the contract between the town of Atherton and the Board Administration of California Public Employees Retirement System, and that is your...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, in January, you adopted a resolution intent to amend our contract with PERS. For this, this, as you know, is part of the APOA MOU, and where the employees are going to pick up, the public safety employees are going to pick up 3% of the employer's share, and then the non-safety employees are going to pick up 1% of the employer's share of the pension contribution, they're already doing that, the non-safety will begin doing that on July 1st. So, PERS requires an ordinance to actually ratify that, and election by employees to do so, this is that ordinance, it's recommended the council conduct a public hearing, introduce the ordinance where you're future reading, authorizing amendment of the contract between the town and Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement. Close this gap.
Thank you, George, all your office is great to have. Any members of council have any questions for staff on item number 14?
Just to like to clarify, because that this, we have already approved this, and it's not asking for any increase in the contributions or any other additional funds that we have already approved.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions? Any members of the public would like to make a public comment on item number 14? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments, back to council, any kind of comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move to item number 15, request for a tentative map parcel, make six parcels into one parcel for the civic center project that 911 actual wrote, and to leave this building station in the prime.
Stephanie Davis, senior planner, thank you. So tonight, the request before you is consideration of a tentative map associated with the civic center project. What the tentative map is doing is a request to merge the six parcels that are part of the civic center master plan development site into one parcel. The tentative map also includes detail on abandonment of right-of-ways, conversion of public roads to private roads, as well as laying out new easements that are proposed as part of the civic center project. T tentative map needs to demonstrate compliance with 10 required findings in accordance with the subdivision map act. The planning commission did review the plans in front of you tonight in October of last year, they were able to make a determination that the 10 required findings were made, and they are recommending that the council approve the tentative map before you tonight. If the council does approve the tentative parcel map, the next step would be the presentation back in front of you again at a subsequent meeting for the adoption of the final map, which ultimately gets recorded. I'm happy to answer any questions on the map, and...
Any members of council questions with that? Please?
So, what's the timing, like do it tonight, would it come back next month, or, because May would be the following month, June, we're, you know, sticking struggles in the ground, I think, so...
I think it could come back as soon as the project team is able to complete those final map drawings, in order to get those back to you in appropriate time. I don't know if that's any timing that Marty that you took off.
Yeah, our goal is that it can come back in April with the final map.
Second question quickly, and this, I guess, is there any reason why we would want to keep the library site parcel separate, or create a new parcel for the library? In any, I'm just, you know, I don't know why, but...
Well, I'd have to look at the details of the building layouts, but I do believe by merging all six parcels into one, that the entire civic center project itself allows itself to demonstrate compliance with the zoning development standards in terms of setback in height. I'm not sure if we were to carve out that one for the library, what that would mean in terms of resulting setbacks and the ability to continue to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Good answer, I like that answer.
Any members, any other members?
Yeah.
Correct, please.
So, right now, there are six parcels here that I assume were added to the town at different times, and this will do away with the separation of those and make one large parcel. And the, and there are two public roads where Ashfield enters the town parcel, and our station lane goes through the town parcel, and both of those public roads will be abandoned, and they will become public roads.
Correct.
Any other members? I just have a quick question related to the San Francisco UC easement issue, we ironed out all the issues here.
I think I can ask Marty to fill, chime in a little bit.
We have, we have one little lingering one, that's, we're dealing with tomorrow morning, actually, with them. We feel pretty confident, at least I feel confident, we'll get a resolution regarding an air vent next to one of the trees out here, and so we're meeting with them tomorrow on that.
Does that impact the first?
Does that impact the question? I mean, does it affect the language that you're putting in?
No.
Yeah, okay. Any other members, no other questions? Thank you very much. Any members of the public would like to make a public comment on the site? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments, and final comments from council? Seeing final comments, can I have a motion? Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, let's go ahead and move to item number 16, appeal the decision of the planning commission to deny a heritage tree removal permit at 222 Camino Alago.
I'm back, I'm trying to change out paper. Tonight, the request before you is an appeal of the decision of the planning commission that was made at its February meeting to deny the request for a heritage tree removal at 222 Camino Alago. At our February meeting, the planning commission had a vote of 3-2, with commissioners Tonelli and Lerner voting no, the remaining commissioners and chair voting yes, to deny the request for the heritage tree removal permit. Discussion by the planning commission at our February meeting did have to do with potential failure of the tree, given the details that their project arborist submitted and peer reviewed by our town arborist. Following the appeal before you tonight, the applicants did submit a supplemental arborist report, as well as a tree hazard evaluation form, which is, I'll call it an industry standard checklist. Neither of those materials were presented nor considered by the planning commission at their meeting back in February. All of these materials have been re-reviewed and reevaluated by our town arborist. The professional opinion of our town arborist in summary is that, given her site analysis of the tree and review of the project arborist's report, that the tree does not pose a significant risk of failure based on its existing conditions. Further, should development of that site occur in the future, and a tree protection zone be implemented, a tree protection zone is a certain distance around a tree based on its size, effectively a buffer zone around a tree that needs to be free and clear of any development, that that tree protection zone in and of itself would also reduce any risk if that tree potentially were to fail in the future. So for the reasons as outlined in the staff report, staff is recommending that the council deny the appeal request and uphold the decision of the planning commission to deny the heritage tree removal permit at 222 Camino Alago. Our town arborist is here as well, if you have any specific questions related to her review of the tree and/or the project arborist's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I'll show you first.
Are there any photographs, I know there's the site plan diagram, and some of the bubbles of the trees on the property, but I was not able to get out there to physically take a look at the site. I'm stuck there. Are there?
There are photographs of the tree within the project arborist's report, attachment, let me get my numbers here.
Our arborist of the January 21st.
Mine is, oh, there, oh, okay, oh, I see, okay.
There's two actually.
What's the structure next to it?
Currently, there's no structure next to it, I believe that photograph was taken prior to all of the physical improvements on the site being demolished, which they currently are, so right now, it's a blank lot. It was...
Next to a house.
Was next to a house, correct.
Okay.
Any other members have fresh bill, please?
Yeah, it looked like from the design, there were two designs for the site, it looked like there was a heck of a lot of cement being poured there, I didn't see anywhere, well, given that, and given the size of the home, maybe they don't need to be there, but where were they putting their retention wells?
We did not, I did not have that detail on the conceptual architectural plans, but I believe the project, excuse me, architect is here, perhaps could answer that question for you.
Please.
Hello, my name is Mary Pichkwa, I'm the project architect. Can you please repeat the question about the gaining wells, because there is none on the...
He was looking for where the location of the retention wells, retention basins are located on site.
So the basement's supposed to be underneath the main structure?
The retention, stormwater retention basin.
Well, at this, this is just a conceptual drawing, so we did not put...
So we haven't done what's going to be on site once you figure out what part of the house is going to be, you're going to do that.
And this is an update, actually, for the second design, after planning denial for the application last time for the approval of the cherry mall, the size or the distance between the trunk of the trees, the one in the back and then the front, increased in order to safely put it in, so the house actually shrank almost twice of its possible size. So if you look at the, the arborist, Kevin, he brought it up in, as part of his report, and he draw the diagram, in order to safely keep distance from the tree, even if it falls, so it doesn't hurt anyone, there's pretty much no buildable area for the site happen. I have the owner of the...
Mr. Mayor, please, I believe we're into a presentation now, and really, this is just answer my question.
No, thank you very much, I, she's right, I should keep more control of the people in the dock. Thank you. Give me my text. I, any other questions for either the arborists? Kevin's here, I see Sam's here as well, so staff, any questions for staff? I actually have some questions for staff if nobody else does, or I can, I can give right the...
No, my question was, I looked at the three drawings, and I couldn't really understand what they were, what they were, because it says, proposed site plan with all trees to remain, proposed site plan, maybe that's a different structure if the trees are able to be removed, it's not clear to me, and then there's another drawing, maybe that was the prior house, I just don't know what that, placing the jizz.
So...
Existing conditions?
Basically, the breakdown of what each design is.
Plan is, sure, so, going to, so, it's labeled as sheet A2 in the bottom right-hand corner, this is their first choice, I would call it, proposed site plan, that shows the footprint of a main building. If you're looking at that drawing on sheet A2, you can see the circle in the middle of that house footprint, that's the proposed tree to be removed, and which the appeal is filed for. Moving on to the next sheet, bottom right-hand corner, A3, what the architect is attempting to display is if that tree were to remain, what the resulting footprint would be if they were to maintain that tree's required tree protection zone, as well as the tree protection zone for, I'm going to call them a cluster of redwood trees to the rear, so it's going to push that house footprint inward towards the lot. Was there another sheet that needed...
There is a third one, but it looks like maybe it's the actual, the residence that exists.
Oh, if, yes, preceding both of those sheets to see, well, was the existing topographic and boundary survey before the improvements got demolished?
So I have a question now.
Elizabeth, please, thank you.
So, if we look at the faint red dashed dark line that looks like a trapezoid or something, is that literally the buildable area footprint, the buildable footprint?
Um, if I could ask which sheet?
It looks like it's the same on both, on both A2 and A3.
Got it, yes, that's correct.
That's the buildable footprint, and if I'm not mistaken, it looks like on A3 at least, that the tree is inside the buildable footprint?
It is.
Any other questions? I have a couple questions related to, and this is probably going to be a salary or a... Related to condition of the tree. I, in reading this, I noticed that there were some drillings of the tree to determine the depth of rock in the, V if you might, well, that's proper...
The crotch?
Crotch, should have known. In the crotch, which apparently has also a drain that is included in there to keep water out of the crotch. Can we talk about how much, or how far down, because it looks like it's a relatively short trunk component before it splits off into a V?
Yeah, it's only four feet, when he did the drill to us, he did locate sub-decade at forty to twelve inches, which is, you usually want six inches of sound wood all the way around, again, many trees in Atherton have a lot of decay, I did feel this tree was imminent hazard, because he found that decay at four, six, and twelve inches.
So, with that, does that answer the question, and I, I will start with this, is that I recently had an experience with a tree, and so I recently experienced some rock, and I understand what happens if the rock has a tendency of going downward from now to
And how much rock did we determine? Is it just isolated to the crotch component? And I understand that the root base seems healthy.
Right, correct. Kevin Kilty, Kilty Arbor Services. We drilled about at the area where, if you look on the plan, somewhere just slightly above the drain tube. And in that area, what we were looking for was whether that crotch had split previously and that was the reason for the drain tube and the cables, or whether the, there was an actual cavity in there why the drain tube... There wouldn't be a drain tube if there wasn't water. There wouldn't be water if there wasn't a cavity or a split in the trunk. So that, those were what our concerns were. So we were at about the level, a little bit above where that drain tube is, so about a foot below the crotch. Above the crotch wasn't as much as a concern. Generally, we're concerned from the damaged area down, because as you said, the rot does tend to, downward is the most rottable direction.
So we actually didn't know that assessment because it wasn't drilled?
We didn't drill at the base. The base, we did a, just a kind of a root crown examination, but not a drill test examination. But what you're saying, there is a tendency for decay to bottom out and you have a hollow tree that is unidentifiable. Drill tests generally aren't very strong on that because you're drilling, you could be drilling through the root into dirt and it would come up as a decay, or you're drilling into the bottom of the trunk. Plus, it really destroys the drill, so.
Okay. There's some comments related to poor form and that the tree is an imbalance tree. Is that reasonable? The left wing seems, which is the old house direction, seems to be a large loaded branch.
Yes, it is. And the photo in that picture, the tree looks better than it does from below, and Jeremy will allude to this when he gets to do his thing. The limb comes out heavy over where the existing house was in the photo, and then it flattens out. And that's always a concern because, you know, your strength is more in an upright where once you get to flat, you're getting, you know, that leverage is working against you. And the cables will not help with that flat spot, that flat area.
Please.
So could it be pruned to take some of that weight off?
Pruning would help, yes. To actually affect the tree, again, we'd be in for a permit with the town because we'd have to violate the town's ordinance with the amount of trimming we would do. We'd probably go thirty-five to forty percent of the foliage in reduction and to even help loosen those cables or any of that kind of thing.
That's amount of pruning, I think would not be healthy for the tree.
It's not. Oaks do bounce back, but then you get this water sprouty looking mildewed oak tree, so it's really not a great thing.
Does it have sudden death syndrome, oak fungus?
No, and I, my time with Atherton and now, I don't know if Sally's seen any, we haven't seen any in town. When we do, it'll be on Los Road. That's where it's going to come from. So those woodside people will be sending it our way. So it comes up through the, through the draws and where water is available. So there's not a lot of bay trees on the site, there's one bay tree and that's the alternate host of sudden death. So that's not a concern on that. Could have good old fashioned slow oak death, which would be crown rot, which is common in Atherton.
But you didn't test for that? You didn't examine it?
We did, just a surface examination for crown rot. Unfortunately, crown rot, and we've all seen trees that have failed in Atherton, it's really not visible on the top. All the activity is going on below grade and when the tree falls, you see a very small root zone and most of the roots that you do see are rotted. So...
So, I'm sorry, I'm just going to try to get back to rot. With a short base, I'm just going on my tool tree memory. Being in that, it is a short base. Is there more concern because it's a short base versus a taller base? So if this was rotten and it was thirty feet, would it be as much of a concern as if it's shorter in the base?
No, it's just the immediate area below and around that crotch.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, if it was thirty feet up, the only thing is, is if it split there, it would fall farther. That would be your concern, but it wouldn't, as far as the structural components of the wood, would not be affected.
So the cabling component? The cabling component is there because there has been a safety concern related to the branch that protrudes over the old home?
Yeah, and from the age of the cable, it looks like the cable was installed at the time of the drain pipe because of concerns of possible failure. And then the second cable was put in probably twenty years later and, again, further concerns. So I actually talked to the contractor on the site who's been working on that property for years, and they said that the owners did minimal amount of work on the oaks. So it was more a case of cabling and doing that work would be less expensive than the removal. The guy also loved trees. I mean, he had some, Sally says he had some horrible trees on the property that were in around the building, inside the building.
Is rot customary with oats?
Yes, apparently.
Sorry, I, just because you're the one that did this. You also wrote a evaluation of this in which wasn't at the planning commission. Can we talk about the report you made related to the assessment of a forty-five out of a hundred?
Yes, what I did, you know, the only thing I didn't bring here tonight was my report. What I did was a Methanian Clark twelve-point decay, I know what it says, a twelve-point hazard assessment. And in that Methanian Clark, it, what they do is they rate the tree, they rate the degree of hazard in three categories. One is the part that's most likely to fail, which would be probably that secondary or the large trunk. And that would get a rating of four. We rate them one to four. Being a big piece of wood, it would be rated at a four. The likelihood of failure is, as I just said, what are the chances of that failing? And I put that at two point five. It's not a super high risk, but there is risk involved more than average. And then target is what the piece will hit. And right now, there's the low target because there's no house, but when the house is built, even with the protection zone, it'll be a high risk because it's not just the house that we're worried about, it's the children playing under the house and that will be using the property. You know, just like in the front of any of your houses, you don't want a tree that's going to fail even if it's not going to hit your house.
Just, sorry guys, I, yeah, who knows. You mentioned in your report that there's the potential of doing a radar assessment or radar evaluation of it. Is that, and I'm sure the cost, what was the concern of that in a radar assessment?
I think that was a planning commission question, and radar assessment would cost probably six thousand dollars. There's two people in the area that I know of that do it, and one of them just retired actually. And it's a tomograph, which is a, it's kind of like an acoustic sound device. You put nails around the tree with sensors on it, you hit it and it sends this, you know, like sonar through the tree. And our results have been mixed on how good it is and the tremendous cost. Drilling still seems to be a better method. You know, we hate to drill too much into the tree because it's slightly invasive, but yeah. So I did some work for Burlingame on El Camino and they did a tomography on one of those eucalyptus trees. And it costs six to eight thousand dollars. They removed the tree and unfortunately, the contractors didn't leave us a slice to see if, you know, to get an idea of the tomography. They did a tomography up in, at Viloli at a conference I was at, and they used a drill test to compare it with, and the tomography missed quite a bit on the oak tree. The thick bark, I think, is the problem with that. So I don't recommend it. I hate to drive my clients' cost up, but also, you know, it's not a hundred percent accurate.
Any other questions from colleagues?
I have a question, I think staff might be doing, I'm not sure. I'm not clear on what the standard should, what standard should be applied to a decision about whether to remove a heritage, or to grant a heritage tree removal? Because it feels like there's actually pretty solid agreement on the facts about the health of this tree, which is that it's not super healthy, but it's maybe not in danger of imminent collapse. And I don't know if that's, is there a clear standard supposed to apply here?
So I did the tree risk assessment as well and I found the tree to have a moderate risk. The tree does have a risk because it has predominant wind. However, I don't feel that it's dangerous enough.
Okay, but I'm asking a really totally different question. What is the planning commission supposed to consider? Is it that there's an imminent risk or is it completely in the discretion of the planning commission to approve or deny on any basis they want? Or is there a standard that's supposed to apply? Sorry to do that today.
So the planning commission's asked to consider tree removal applications in the context of the general plan and making a finding. A finding is if the tree removal is contrary to the purpose and intent of the Atherton general plan. So what we do is take applicable tree-related policies in the adopted general plan and the planning commission evaluates the specifics of each individual tree application in the context of those findings. I've included those in the policy section of the council staff report. So certainly, the potential for hazard and safety has been a matter that the commission has considered in other tree removal applications in the context of general plan policy.
I wanted to be further that question. And what is the impact of a heritage tree being in the building footprint versus outside of it? Because this one appears to be in it.
It is, and it's an oak tree. And the way that the current municipal code requirements read is that an oak tree in the buildable area, so that box based on setbacks, if you have an oak tree in that buildable area, it cannot be removed unless it is determined to be dead or dangerous. Right now, that tree is determined to be neither of those things, which triggered the need for it to...
That's, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So either dead or dangerous is sort of... Okay. Please, Bill.
So the heritage tree, this tree is thirty-eight point two inches and so it's actually smaller than what we would consider elsewhere to be a heritage tree. Is that correct? I thought a heritage tree was four inches in circumference. Well, this is thirty-eight point two.
This is thirty-eight inches in diameter at four feet high. So that's diameter.
It says to be thirty, a minimum of thirty at four feet.
Forty-eight inches circumference or fifteen inches diameter as a heritage tree.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I don't quite understand. So does that mean this is a heritage tree?
Yes, it's a heritage tree.
Thirty-eight point five or fifteen?
Yeah. Any other questions? No. Any members of the public would like to, oh, please, if you have a question, because I can open it up for public comments and I'll give you an opportunity. Oh, yeah, please. Please, step on up.
Hi, my, good evening. My name is Sabit Metta. My parents are the applicants, but they're traveling abroad. They've been abroad for a couple of months. So I just wanted to just give a quick background on our family and some of our concerns. We've been mid-peninsula residents for thirty-two years. All thirty-two years, we're in Hillsborough, which is where I grew up, my sister grew up. We've always grown up around trees and oaks, and so we totally appreciate that this process is here and we appreciate, yes, that's why we chose to move to Hillsborough eighty-six. They're motivated, they're really excited to come to this community and they're motivated by the warmer, slightly warmer climate, being a little closer to their friends. My father worked in the city, which is why the original work in Hillsborough, but they're kind of semi-retired now. And this is sort of, this is their dreams, where they plan to live the rest of their years. We've never jumped around a lot, again, two houses in thirty-two years, both in Hillsborough. And so they're really vested in their community. The house in Hillsborough, they were stewards, it was a three-acre, hundred-year-old plus property, and the home that they stewarded for twenty-one years. In fact, so they wanted downsides, they had three acres and a lot of it was wooded, we had a creek of oaks. And even the previous property was on the lip of a canyon, so, you know, we totally understand this type of community and we were part of it. I know that when I, this kind of came up to me after the planning commission, I've never been through this process before, when I kind of got briefed on it, my layperson's immediate thought was, we've been around a lot of trees, but not around a lot of trees with cables that require cables that aren't naturally supporting themselves when there's people around there. It's a different thing, maybe in the middle of the woods. So that's the first thing that came to my mind. My kids are nine and seven, my sister's kids are ten and seven, and, you know, we do visit my parents frequently, I live in San Francisco, so we visit very frequently. And so, you know, right off the bat, there was, without even understanding all, you know, that team did the whole building plan, but just, that's the first thing that popped into my head. And I was asked to kind of step in, at least give some background since they're not here and it's sometimes get to put a face to the name of the applicant. They would be here otherwise, but they're on a very faraway trip in India and New Zealand. And yeah, my reaction was like, hey, can we just get, you know, to be sent in some technical question? Can we get some sort of additional reports and lean on Kevin for that? I read through the main tree report and it didn't seem encouraging. And I understand there's a band of subjective assessment of risk here, but I'll just, let's just say as a parent, it's not a very comforting band between what is this, one side of the assessment and the other side of the assessment. So, you know, again, I'm kind of looking at this case fairly fresh, but my understanding is also that it was, you know, three to two votes and not overwhelmingly one way or the other in the planning commission. And, you know, what I would totally respect, the work done on all sides, but I would, you know, considering all the factors, you know, my views to Aaron, I would submit that you cast, or ask that you would cast your vote on the side of safety. And, you know, part of this is, we want to overmitigate the effect, right? So we love trees and so the whole property, you know, planting more trees is not an issue. The whole property as a whole becomes even more wicked, that's okay. It's just that this particular tree is what's causing some heartburn right now. So I guess, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Not a question for George. George?
George. Since all the information was not available to the planning commission on their rendering, is it possible that this can be sent back to them for reevaluation?
I would assume so, but you're a no vote.
Okay.
Information new, right?
Yeah.
It's actually, this is one of our...
Both of those answers are correct. It's up on the appeal now and your review is the noes, it's all over again, but if there's new information, then you...
Since all the information was, uh, was not available to the planning commission on their rendering, is it possible that this can be sent back to them for reevaluation?
I would assume so, but you're a no vote.
Okay.
Information new, right?
Yeah.
Both of those answers are correct. It's up on appeal now, and here's the review, here's the notice, it's all over again. But if there's new information, then you want the planning commission to see that information, so it helps you make a decision in the future, you can send it back. So, your point.
I will just say, thank you for having your parents with you, after that.
Really appreciate that.
It's a better weather conditions.
Sorry. My mom has been really on it for a while. She's an avid gardener and it just, she knows a few degrees of difference makes a big deal of it.
And it's a great downsized choice.
I'm sorry.
It's a great downsized choice.
Just from that particular property.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? I'm going to thank the applicants and then, Kevin, you want to go for something?
Thank you.
You want the last word?
I'm afraid I won't be the last, but, um, I do have a few talking points, and it's mainly to answer the, some of the planning commission questions that I was already sitting down for and did not get a chance to speak to. I put them on a piece of paper, so you guys can follow along, excuse any typos. And I don't want to sound, Atherton is a great town, it's been great to deal with, so don't take anything that I have to say offensively.
Don't worry, you won't.
Thank you for hearing us on the removal of the oak tree. The site, as you've heard, is one point seven acre lot, currently has thirty-six heritage trees on it. So think about what you've got on your property. Thirty-six is a lot of trees for a one acre site.
However, they approved seven oak trees for removal that were more dangerous.
Yeah.
And they wanted to remove the redwoods as well, ninety-nine.
Okay, so, the lot is odd-shaped, as you've seen, and as you pointed out, so the buildable space parallels the lot angles and makes part of the buildable space relatively unbuildable, unless you're going to use a triangular building, um, over on that western corner. The depth of the buildable space is approximately a hundred feet. There's two fifty-inch diameter redwoods on the rear of the buildable space, and this thirty-eight inch diameter oak tree in the front. Using the town's drip line calculations, that leaves about ten feet of buildable, a ten-foot band of buildable space for the house to be built. Of course, we encroach into, um, the drip lines of the trees regularly, but technically according to the town's regulations, it almost makes this lot unbuildable for a new house. The, um, and on the tree, three arborists have looked at the tree now. Jeremy Ingles, who's here from Main Tree, myself, and David Beckham did a, he's a certified risk appraiser, he did a track, much like the one that you showed me, he did a track for him and found the tree to be, um, much in agreement with what I said. The tree's more dangerous than it is safe. We're going to say that, so, um, the, as we discussed, the tree has a poor crotch at four feet high, included bark, which means you have bark pushing against bark. So as every, each trunk gets larger, these bark pieces push themselves apart, causes a high number of failures on the peninsula in the state come from included bark. And the thing about included bark is it could fail at any time, any weather. It's not a storm-related problem. Crotch has a drain, which we've discussed, was holding water, would be the only reason they could put a drain, would put a drain in there. The, um, the first cable was to support the crotch. Second cable, which was poorly installed, which Jeremy alluded to, was put in above the original cable. So the second cable's slack, and if the first cable were to break, the shock load on the second cable would probably cause that to break, and then we'd have the collapse of the tree. Drill test you heard about? The target is going to be the home or the area around the home where people will be. So it's a high risk where people will be. Now, I'm going to go over a couple of failures in the town, just so that, just so you can know. I've been a tree trimmer arborist for forty years, working in Atherton, up and down the peninsula. Twenty-five years as a tree care professional, spent a lot of time on roofs with these failures. Fifteen as a consulting arborist. The last five years, I've recommended five trees in the town of Atherton to be removed that were ignored or denied in Atherton. The valley oak at the corner of Middlefield and Fair Oaks collapsed one night. I had told Public Works about it, and they did some action to remedy the problem, but they didn't finish the project, and that tree collapsed in the middle of the night, no one heard, thank God. But it took out all the, all the cable, communication bundles, closed the road for about twenty hours. Valley oak at Town Hall, so the one that fell on the Public Works building, which is kind of ironic. I notified the town about that tree being poor, and it should be removed immediately. They did nothing, and it ironically fell on their Public Works building and generator, causing a bit of damage. A live oak at one fifty-six Stockbridge failed onto a garage after being refused for a tree removal permit. Later on, the planning commission approved it, but right after the planning commission approved it, it fell on the garage. The garage was going to be demoed, so it wasn't no harm, no foul, but it was a tree that, you know, was removed. Two trees I recommended are still standing. One has a tag on it right now to be removed by the railroad tracks over there, and one's right outside the front of your building here. It's a blue atlas cedar that, when it fails, will land on whoever's parked in front of the town hall here. So I've talked to Sally about that, she's starting, she didn't know about it, this was prior to Sally being here, so she didn't know about it, so she is going to investigate that. So that's about the town. Legal ramifications, the, your counsel is correct that the town is protected legally against liability claims. However, that doesn't mean the town will not be sued. I've worked on quite a few lawsuits as a consulting, as an expert witness. The city of Tracy was sued for damages when an ash tree split, co-dominant leader, had a poor crotch and injured a young girl on a playground. That court case took eight years to settle, and the city of Tracy did pay monies, whether they had to or not, but they did pay quite a bit. County of Alameda was sued. They settled on an injury when a Chinese elm split again in a poor crotch and injured a pedestrian. City of San Jose was named in a suit when a silver maple failed onto a truck, killing a child in the parked vehicle. That, I was hired by the insurance company for the owner of the property, and that paid out, I believe, quite a bit of money, and San Jose did, was required to pay that. County of San Mateo, you all remember this one. Oak tree fell down at Memorial Park. Kid was sleeping in a tent, and I believe he lost his leg. I don't know what the, I did not get involved with that because I work for San Mateo.
So in the interest of how we get that there's exposure, and thank you for the written...
One more. Town, town of Hillsborough, a private property, a eucalyptus, small eucalyptus limb fell through a windshield of a car and speared the lady's leg into the seat. I was dragged in to that because I was the town's consulting arborist, and I think the homeowner ended up picking up the tab, but definitely the town was in the lawsuit. So you understand that, that it does happen, even though, um, Bill was right. Other cities handle buildable space in a different way. City of Palo Alto, as difficult as they are to work with, they have a condition in their ordinance that allows if heritage trees on the property cover over twenty-five percent of the buildable space, that, that one or more of those trees can be removed to make the property buildable. If that was used on this property, seventy percent of the area is probably covered in drip line, and the logical choice would be to remove this poor tree, which is probably a health hazard anyway. And if the tree was removed, we'd have thirty-five heritage trees, still heavier wooded than most lots in Atherton. And since the town is, is looking to remove ten heritage trees to build a new town hall, I would think they would have some sympathy about this one poor tree being removed, so people can build the house they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. You didn't hear, we also saved a ton of trees, did we?
Yeah, I know, Sally and I have talked about it at length, so.
We can start going back.
No, no, we're not.
Still the applicants.
Still the applicants.
Yeah. And Jeremy's going to come up with a quick thing about what he saw on the tree. Thank you.
Jeremy, come on up, join us. Tell us something we don't know yet.
It's mostly the same. Jeremy Ingles with Main Tree Expert Company, certified arborist, been certified for about fifteen years now. I too inspected the tree. Obviously know there is a drain above the tree, and the tree is typically installed for relieving water, seeing that there's a presence of decay there. It has a co-dominant attachment of four feet, about halfway up on the limb, excuse me, there's a large cavity, about twelve inches in diameter, and that cavity in itself does have some callous wounds around the outside, which is typical of a tree trying to seal off a wound, but it does increase the chance of failure, being that you have another spot of decay about halfway up the tree. That leader also has several cables. One of the cables obviously was pretty old. The newer cable that was installed there is slack now, and as previously mentioned, if there was any sort of load on that, it does give a chance of that failing as well. Throughout the remaining upper portion of the tree, I did find several other cavities, which indicates the tree does have a symptomatic thing where you're constantly having decay present in the tree. Now, whether that's just the environment around there that tends to be moist and promotes decay, it's hard to say, but it is something that does continue to happen over the canopy. Other than that, you have a nice, healthy, green tree, which is good, except you have all these cavities. So you end up having a bunch of new weight on the ends of these limbs, and that weight is supported by a pore structure. So over time, it's, the increased chance of failing is going to, you know, happen more and more. So you can mitigate that by pruning, but the likelihood of failure is still pretty high. So in general, you have a tree that's fairly healthy and green with poor structure over an area that you're going to have a lot of people underneath. And so in general, you're setting yourself up for a pretty significant issue if something fails and somebody gets hurt. Any questions?
Any questions?
So, I've got a question.
Sure.
The cable, it's been mentioned that the newer cable is slack. And I'm curious as to why it would be slack? Did the tree kind of start growing so that, you know, it stopped needing that string? And that's one question. And then could that cable be strengthened, tightened, to make sure that it does kind of keep them together? That's one. And then let me just say about the cavities. I walk Park and Sacred Heart, have you seen all the oak trees along Park Lane, Sacred Heart? There are hollow trees. I mean, these are monster trees, and all around Park Lane and Helena, and they're completely hollows. Are they going to fall on me every time I walk my little dog?
That is, you know, that's what we call acceptable risk. You drive a car every day, you walk across the street, those are all potential risks you take. Whenever you have a large tree like that, that is continually growing, a large cavity with decay that's present in there, that's slowly eating away at the interior of the tree, and you're having a less sound wall.
Maybe you can see the water kind of dripping out the edge.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a significant worry, obviously, we're talking about something else here. As far as the cable goes, typically when you install a cable, you like to do some weight reduction first. And so when you install that cable, you reduce the weight you put the cable in, and then the tree, as it puts on more weight, more growth, it tightens that cable up. Because that older cable, it's already kind of kept that edge or that limb fairly tight. And so when they put the new cable in, either A, they didn't do any weight reduction, or B, it was difficult to tighten it up even more because it's a pretty heavy one to try to bring back up. And so I wasn't there to install the cable, I don't know how, and it was none, but as it is presently, the cable does have a wave in it, and that's typical of a poor job, honestly.
I think Kevin mentioned, did you do a tree assessment as well?
I did not do a tree assessment. I just went to look at that tree in particular. You know, where the, the construction entrance is right now, I'm not sure, I haven't looked at the plans, I didn't do anything about the tree protection plan or looked at the plan review or anything like that. But if the driver's going to be in the same area, you're talking about a tree that's right next to the entrance to the property. So whether it's over the house itself or what have you, I mean, it's, it's in an area where you're going to have a lot of people underneath it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Is that it for the applicant? I am going to ask if there are questions for staff or anybody else that we can go to public comments.
Actually, for the applicant?
Please.
Yes, my name is Anna Chase, and I actually work with Mr. and Mrs. Metta, I was their realtor, and so we talked about them relocating to Atherton, and I just wanted to say a little bit more about that, why, you know, about them. I know we've heard from somebody also why they, you know, why they picked that location. Yes, of course, we all love Atherton, I am myself also an Atherton resident. A lot of it was also that they have so many friends that are already Athertonians, and literally, you know, from where they are, where they would be, where they want to build their, you know, their dream house, their last one, and they actually want to build French Country House, which would fit very nicely, you know, in that old, you know, Park Lane, you know, Camino Lago setting, was that literally their neighbors are already their friends, and of course they met some new ones, you know, like right, this right here, two behind. But, you know, when you're facing the house, the neighbor diagonally crossed from them at two-six-six Park Lane is a veteran, a divvy who is all-time family friend, you know, the neighbor's on their right, it's Doyle family, that's already long-time friends. So literally, we can go one by one and just say that they already know, I want to say, you know, significant part of Atherton, and Atherton community would be so lucky that they can, you know, they can move and they can build the house and, you know, as, again, I think we do have a better climate than Hillsborough. We lived substantially. It was, it took several months, and as you know, in Atherton, I mean, lots don't come by that often, especially the prime location, and at that time, there was, you know, it was literally, there was not, you know, the inventory was very low. And we did look at the lot, again, the lot shape is very challenging to build, however, they tried not to get discouraged by that because it looked like the lot has still large enough buildable envelope. However, if you look at the proposed set plan that the architect put together, you pretty much are using all of that buildable envelope because of the lot shape, it's just, it is challenging. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm assuming no questions for any of you, unless you guys were out looking. Thank you, ma'am. Sally, if you want to...
I just wanted a little bit of background for the site. So I did meet with the previous owner, and I also met with some clients that wanted to buy the site, and it is, it was a really hard site to work on. And that's why I approved seven heritage oaks previous to this one on the site. The applicant also wanted to remove redwoods on the site as well, and additional trees, but those were denied. The reason why I'm here at this one is because that's where they want to build their house. They designed thinking that they would get all the trees approved. I went to the site again today, and there's additional oak trees on the site that lead, the co-dominant leaders. So there are other dangerous trees on the site, however, this is the one they're concerned with because this is where they want to design their house. So for me, I had to look at the health of the tree, and there's moderate risk because of the co-dominant leaders, that's, any arborist will tell you that. But I don't feel that the... But I don't feel that the, the tree is danger enough, dangerous enough to approve it at my level. We usually work with applicants to redesign their house, but they weren't willing to do that, so that's why we're here.
Thank you, Sally.
I have a question.
Staff, Rick.
Sally, did the information that came in after the planning commission decision have any influence on you?
No, I decided to still stick with the denial. I did the, I did the jurisprudence as well, and I got a moderate risk. So there is risk, but just having a heritage oak tree, there is a risk. I also didn't know there was a new arborist on board. He wasn't part of the application for planning commission, and he wasn't part of the application for the appeal, so they brought in an additional person for this meeting. So we might wanna have another assessment on paper for him, so.
So I have one more question. So when you evaluate this kind of a situation, it sounds like your standard is if the tree is in the buildable footprint, then in order to approve removal, you need to determine that it's dangerous.
It needs to be dangerous, and oak trees are the only tree protected in the main house buildable area.
And, and that's any oak tree or an oak tree over a certain size?
Any native oak tree over fifteen inches diameter. Outside of that buildable area, all species of trees fifty inches in diameter are protected.
Any other questions for Sally? Thank you, Sally. I'm gonna close the questions from our side, and I'm gonna ask any members of the public any public comments related to this subject.
This is Betsy Colby. And I just wanna congratulate the planning commission on finally denying a heritage tree removal request. I've been waiting for this. I haven't seen the tree, and I'll let you decide on the merits of it, but I'm just encouraged that there's, that this discussion is happening. Trees are very important, and our general plan says that we want to have a scenic rural, thickly wooded residential area. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Any other members of the public comments on this topic? See, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments and bring it back to council. Final comments? Elizabeth, since you've been starting off, all right?
Yeah, I think I'll just start.
Have they been so used up and left, not everybody?
Yeah. So I have been to the property to look at the tree. I lived around the corner from the tree. I know the property very well, is where, you know, Dale's always comes into Camino Lago, it's right at the intersection. The trees on the property don't look like they've been well cared for. It's a very clay lot that the soil doesn't appear to have been taken well care of, which is exemplified by the decision that Sally made to have seven heritage oak trees removed from the site because they weren't healthy. When I built my house, which was, is about a block away, I had two heritage oak trees in my building footprint, very close to the edge of the building footprint, which is very similar to this one. Both of those trees look healthier than this one looks. But they, they were both impacted by the location of the house because it was right as close to them as the builder could put it. My experience, if we decide to deny the permit, I'm, I'm sharing it with you just because I think it's important, is if you take care of those trees and improve the soil, the trees are gonna respond. My trees have responded unbelievably well, and I live on Clay Drive, so it's clay. And I, I, I think this tree can recover. I, it, 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 the tree is, I think Sally's assessment is a fair assessment, it doesn't look great, and there's particularly one side of the tree that has lost some of its limb and it needs care. I feel sympathetic to the applicant on this because, A, it's in the footprintage, the tree isn't a, we've walked around this parcel and looked at all the trees that were subject to removal on this parcel, and we did everything that we could to protect every one of those trees, and some of those trees had some challenges. I don't think, from my review, and, and I didn't go into the decay, so I'm not an arborist, I'm not at that level, this tree doesn't look as healthy as any of those that we were able to protect on this property. While I'm sympathetic to the arborists, I also feel like, with, Atherton is a town of trees, you know, we really respect and honor our trees, that's why we have the heritage tree ordinances that we have. We worked really hard on this property, and we're doing a big building project on this property. We moved roads to protect the trees because we, we really did everything we possibly could to protect every tree, and I think everyone up here knows this. It took a lot of time. So we want to maintain the trees, they're, they're important. I, I am aware of that the applicant's proposing to put in six forty-eight inch oaks. Six, that, those, those are good-sized trees if, if we approve the removal of it. So I feel torn on this.
Since we have a moment of silence, I will chime in here, just in my experience with trees, and I am going to express that I have some considerable concern on the shape of this tree and the positioning of the B component going to where people would most likely be active. I wish there was more of an assessment related to the rock component, but I will tell you, I have had personally a recent experience related to rock, related to oak, and I was only blessed that the tree fell in the opposite direction. And I have other trees on my site that I love dearly, but I would have, I'm a little younger, and I think I can run away if something actually happened in a certain area where I'm just kinda living with them, but I have trees that are very similar to this, and I would be probably have, losing some degree of sleep if I built a house anywhere in proximity to where this tree potentially could be, or if I had children playing in the front yard. I would probably have some degree of loss of sleep. I kind of also believe that you buy a site and you get what you get, but there was probably some difficult constraints with this. But building anywhere near, or even having a tree that has this type of crotch, that would raise my concerns building period, and I will use some of the language that it's dangerous, but how dangerous? And I, I don't even like the word dangerous. So, and I, and I've heard that from both sides, we on our side, we reflect the terminology dangerous. I, so I, I, I have difficulty with it, but I really am gonna lean a little bit more on the side of safety and concerns that potentially it could be a risk in the near future. Please, Bill.
So I've looked at that, at the tree, the property, part of my due diligence, and read over both Sally's report and Kevin's report, which was quite comprehensive. And as, as the mayor said, both of them showed that there was risk. One says moderate risk, the other one says more substantial risk, but still there's risk there. And I too would prefer to, I'd like to save the tree, but I, I also don't think it's, it's appropriate to put somebody's life and their new house that they're gonna build at jeopardy. If we're recognizing that there's risk and we think it's moderate, moderate to high, that, that puts it more in a dangerous area, and I think that really we need to heed that. I also think that the planning commission may have looked at it differently had they had all the documentation. Of course, you know, we don't know that at this point in time, so while I'd like to save the tree, and, and, you know, as, as Rick pointed out, we invested a substantial amount of money to save a number of trees here. You know, I, I think that this one here, I'd be weighing more on the side of safety than, than on the side of trying to rejuvenate it. To that point, Elizabeth.
Okay. We're all feeling a little, a little, I don't wanna say wishy-washy, but torn, because it's, it's a, it's a tough issue. Where I would, where I was going, by the way, was, was it, I'm not clear what standard we apply, what it means to say something is dangerous. What I heard is it's risky, but not, there's risk, but there's no imminent danger. And, and I think both sides essentially said, said that. What I, we do have some new information, I, I would issue perhaps sending it back to the planning commission, but part of that is because I'm not sure what, one thing I haven't heard is what kind of mitigation plan would be in place if this tree were removed. And I know that there's some reference to, to what, what plantings could go in, and I don't fully understand what those are. But it seems to me if we're gonna be serious about our desire to protect oaks, native oaks here, if we allow them to be removed, we'd actually know what's gonna be done to replace that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So clearly, we're all very torn about it. This is a very difficult lot, and I'm sure that the house that you are going to design will be a beautiful home and comparable to your neighbor's homes in Elia. So I, when I moved down my small lot, there were no trees on it, and I think I planted sixty trees on my lot, and three of them were valley oaks. The valley oaks. And they were not forty-eight inch boxes, they were just like a twenty-four inch, and they're now thirty feet tall. Have you seen them? They're, yeah, yeah, and that was just like five years ago. So you can, you can take a big oak in a big forty-eight inch box and plant, and, and make it better. And in fact, I think we should encourage our residents to start planting new oak trees to reseed and replenish, because every oak tree that's around here is at a moderate to high risk. I mean, walking around, I have to think, you know, you are not safe anywhere in the eucalyptus. I mean, it's the same way, same situation. So I, I want to save every tree I can possibly save, but I would like to say that I think this particular tree, it's, would be okay to let go, but we need to, I don't know where your planting plan is to put the additional six forty-eight inch box oaks, and I'd work with the arborists to do that, to reseed and replant and nurture them, and you have to care for your land, just like Councilmember DuBois said. You have to nurture the land. We have a lot of terrible soil here. You have to prune your trees, you have to feed them, you have to not put irrigation up next to them so that they get root rot. You've got to understand how to care for them. I mean, there's, they don't like a lot of water, they don't like grass growing next to them. So that's kind of, I mean, my first instinct was, no, we could save this tree, and I think that if you redesign, I feel, I'm not a architect, but I feel like I could redesign into this little odd shape, a very lovely home that you'd love, but, I mean, because your driveway area is ginormous, I would take a lot of that away, even though it's outside the building, but I would take that away and put more soft scape instead of tight scape. Because one of the things you're gonna have to do is create a detention trench for your on-site water, and that is going to impact some of your other trees and things, because all the water that comes on your plant, your, your property, you have to keep on your property until it percolates out. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Thank you very much. Staff, I'm assuming if we go ahead and go forward with what the alternative recommendation is, number two, that is the case, you're going to be able to work with our applicant related to what council member listed, says as six forty-eight inch trees.
Mr. Mayor, page eleven, Town of Atherton Draft Heritage Tree Removal Permit. It does have listed there, there is a plan provided by the architect, Nadia Beachville, that shows the location, and that was in front of the planning commission at the time. I think, Staff, Sally's aware of where they, where they go, so.
Perfect. So then I think that it.
And, excuse me, it just went by forty-eight inch oak, forty-eight inch box.
Inch box.
I don't want a forty-eight inch tall oak, okay? I want a forty-eight inch box matured.
You're the only one that would do that.
So to finalize their new structure, they will, it will be required, they plant that, plus their replacements for the seven underoaks. So that place will be, have a lot of oak replacements.
Thank you very much.
And then we might be able to go to Mr. DuGolia's house and put some more.
Put some soil conditioner under his trees.
So do we need a motion to?
Ah, yes, we are gonna need a motion to. Come on.
No, I think, I think it's.
Okay. So can I get a motion that looks like number two on page number three, please? That would be just what everybody's thinking.
I'd like to, you know?
Please.
I'd like to maybe a motion to appeal, to approve the, what?
Uphold the appeal.
Uphold the appeal. Is that right?
I think so.
Uphold the appeal.
The tenant doesn't like what was done before.
Right, their appeal, uphold the appeal of the decision of the planning commission to dismount a hill of the tree removal in the two-two-two Camino Lago.
Well, can we, I'll second that. We're gonna make sure that reflects.
I wanna amend it to make sure that it includes the replace, the condition of replacement of six.
That's on page eleven.
Oak trees.
Forty-eight inch box trees.
There are forty-eight inch boxes.
Absolutely. I agree to them.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you for everything.
It was easy.
And thank you for joining us, Natalie.
You're welcome, Natalie.
Thank you very much.
Well, there is a lot of, to me, this is a lot of.
Expect a big party. Under the X.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to regular agenda, item number seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before Robert jumps in here or Marty jumps in here, just for clarity, item number seventeen is just providing feedback on your recent visit to the Stormwater Capture Facility projects in Lakewood, Southern California, and to provide direction to staff on next steps for public outreach for the CoCo's Water Capture Project in Atherton. We don't have any other consultants here, we don't have any other piece in the room, we're not here to address any of the details.
Robert's got it. Thank you, George. Any questions for members of staff with the scope that you just heard? Elizabeth?
Yep.
Questions?
Yes, relates to timing, actually. What, can you just walk me through the, what to, to provide feedback about an outreach plan? I'd like to know when, when we have to actually reach decisions on this, how much time we have right now, how much time?
Well, we are, Robert Abadia, Director of Public Works, we're coming to you to get direction in terms of the type of outreach and the, the amount of outreach. We're looking to hopefully come back to the council at the April council meeting with the twenty percent conceptual design and the feedback that we get from the public, so we have a little bit of time to, to do some of that outreach, depending on the type that you are asking. If we need to extend that a little bit, then, then we will.
So just, well, you're hoping for April, is there, is there a deadline, or a, any reason it would have to be April through October, or whatever?
Other than the cooperative implementation agreement that we have with Caltrans on meeting certain expenditure milestones, if we were to move forward, that's, that's basically it. But to meet those expenditure milestones, the, if approved by the council to move forward, the desire would be to be, to be heading towards construction next summer.
So I just have a clarifying question about carpet for the horse, any public outreach, but don't we need?
But don't we need to receive our twenty percent design information from the consultants to understand exactly what conditions we have before we, on which we would be able to make a more informed decision?
So at this point, we've started with the conceptual layouts and have rough footprints of what that facility will look like?
I'm not talking about footprints and layouts of the construction. I'm talking about toxics, how many toxics we have, decline, how much of the flow we have, what other kinds of, and then flood control that we want, things like that. I mean, kind of the, the nuts and bolts of the conditions of our creek, of our channel.
And that information would be brought forward to you when you, when you're asked to make a decision?
The twenty percent, so?
The twenty percent?
Yeah.
Because my mind is that the twenty, we're only going to go twenty percent design. We're not going to spend any more money and actually all that money's going to be reimbursed, right?
That's correct.
And then with that, we evaluate, it seems a little hard for the horse to do a lot more public outreach until we have that twenty percent, all that information.
Boom. I'm sorry, may I jump in here just to echo a little bit of Robert and Russ' answer? You can allow the consultant to get to that twenty percent mark and then stop and say, let's do another public outreach after that? And then bring it back to us to make a decision on the twenty percent, go, we're done with the project.
Any other questions for staff?
Bill? I have a comment to-
We'll get there.
What, in staff's judgment, is the benefit to the town of continuing through the engineering process? So what information, the question is, what informa, we, we have some conceptual understanding of this project now, which was presented at Park and Rec on May seventh, which is much more than we had when we started this process, right? But that was the first report on March seventh, and the twenty percent engineering is not yet complete. And my question is, what additional information of value will come to the town from the engineering report that has not been completed? This would be between now and the end of the twenty percent.
Well, the, the answer to that is that we will, the, with the consultants moving forward to that twenty percent, we'll better be able to answer the questions that have been asked by the council and by the public. And one of those reasons for continuing with that public outreach process now is to continue to get feedback from the public regarding those concerns. So that as we move forward and complete the twenty percent design, we'll be able to answer those questions for you and for the residents.
Okay, so let me just push on my question a little further. So we can better answer the questions. I mean, it may be that we have a perspective from the visit that we did to Southern California and from the information that we've already gotten. But is there information that we're going to get from the consultants completing the project that is information that is of value to the town? That if we don't get it, we would lose it if we decided not to continue with the investigation?
Yes.
And I don't know specifically as much as you know what that valuable information is that we might be able to obtain that Caltrans is paying for?
Robert, oh, that's just, sorry. We don't know a lot, because the consultants aren't here, they've got all that information right now, which they're processing a lot, but a lot of this fluid flow in the channel, feasibility of percolation. One of the things we just recently found was that we may not be able to percolate the water down, and we may have to hold it and put it back into the channel. That's some of the data that consultants start to pull out when they do those queries of the park itself in different locations. But we don't know what that means yet, we don't know how it will affect this project, and we don't know what data they're going to produce. Because the town's got to do some flood retention at some point in town somewhere, how that data will help us analyze a future potential project.
So, so I just really want to push on this because I want to understand what valuable information there might be that is coming that we don't yet have. And one is some specific information about the percolation ability as a result of the drilling that they did. Another is the quantity of flow, I guess, and, and maybe some assessment of what is in that flow?
The pollution, toxics, are they doing toxic analysis?
Part of their conceptual design is to give us information around the flow. Is, is there any other specifics that you can help with that?
I'd say part, part of that's going to be the operational aspects, how it would operate, what the control systems would be, under what conditions, is it diverted flow, under what conditions would it be recommended not to? And so those, as well as fine tuning a little more in terms of the details of the different components, what they've been able to present thus far are conceptual level details of those things. And so that twenty percent, we'll fine tune those in terms of sizing, types of recommended materials or what those options might be. And again, what the operating parameters, how best it would be for us to be able to deal with our flood control issues utilizing the, the detention system? As well as the operating parameters and the level of filtration on the, on the stormwater itself.
Yeah, if I might add too, we're going to get better information, data about ongoing operations and maintenance costs. Because right now we have, you know, things based on Lakewood and other things that you guys went to. But what, at the twenty percent level, we're going to have a bunch, much better handle of what that O and M is based on what equipment will be needed, how many pumps, things like that, if any. And then what kind of infrastructure is going to be there? So at the twenty percent level, I think you're going to have enough information to decide if this is a go, no go? Or if you want to have more community outreach after that.
Perfect. Bill, question?
So, this kind of is a precursor, you know, I did speak to the state's water board and the stormwater people, a guy by the name of Dan Bowler. And, you know, based on his explanation of, he doesn't believe there's any PCPs in our water up here and that the mercury is coming from, from the rain, that it's coming from coal burning furnaces. So it's a miniscule amount. So my question is, because I was going to get to one, why couldn't we just consider doing something like was at the airport? Which, where we're doing is taking out fine, fine pieces of trash and things that come off the road or that are in the water that we don't want to go to the, to the, into the bay, which is good. And, and, and then also have a stormwater capture operation there too. So essentially, like they were doing at, at Long Beach Airport, ignoring all this other fine particulate and going through all these grains of sand that are going to grab onto anything that's, that's potentially what people are getting upset about. Of can we, can we modify this program to where we're just capturing litter and fine particulate? That is similar to what they're doing at Long Beach Airport and also get the benefit of the stormwater capture?
That's probably more of a Caltrans question and whether their money is contingent upon that. And again, we're, we're not here really discussing our project. It's really feedback from your visit to Southern California, what you saw, what you investigated, and then do you want to do public outreach before the twenty percent or after twenty percent?
But I'd like that, I'd like that as part of the twenty percent, I'd like that answer.
Okay.
I, I think that's a very important answer.
We can take it down, but we can't answer it.
So yeah, fine, but I was just asking, would the twenty percent get us to that point?
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none from us, I'm going to go ahead and thank you, staff, bringing it out to the public. Any members of the public would like to talk, make a public comment related to this particular subject?
Sure.
Hello, first, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Daniel Walker and I live with my wife and six month olds on, on Maple Avenue. We chose Maple Avenue to start our family because of the tree-lined street and proximity to the library and to the park. We visit the park nearly every day with our son and our dog. And my wife and I are against building a water treatment facility there, and we just wanted to share our perspective with you. My first point is that we look forward to the new community center, but it is a massive undertaking. And as construction begins, we've got two hopes. One, that the town maintains its focus on the project and executes the vision and avoids drying out that construction longer than it needs to be. And two, that we can escape that construction when it peaks by walking over to Holbrook Palmer. We hope the council weighs the massive impact on the residents close to both of those projects who would be surrounded by construction if they're carried out simultaneously. My second point is that the project would forever alter the beautiful park. It's a gem on the peninsula, and if we proceed with excavating and installing this facility, we'll change it in a way that cannot be undone. So I hope that due consideration is given to the long-term change to the character of the park that could happen here. Finally, there's a, there's a few unclear risks after attending the Parks and Rec meeting. It sounds like the, the other projects that this is being compared to is not fully operational yet, so we don't have a lot of insight into ongoing earthquake liability. And potential for unpleasant smolder develop over time and the cost of ongoing repairs as that facility ages. So I've written to the council members and I appreciate your consideration of our, of our viewpoint. And we hope that the council is able to consider alternatives that could meet the need of the community while preserving the park that we all love.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Thank you.
You pressed it, okay. I'm Julie Quinlan, I'm a resident of Atherton. I've already communicated with some of you. When I'm hearing you just sitting here, I already had some ideas on what I was going to say, but I think that one thing you really need to think about is, when will you have enough information without going through everything in the kitchen sink to really be able to make a decision? The Parks and Rec meeting was excellent. There were some very good questions, there was some good information that came out. For me, it gave enough information for me to say, hey, you know, what is going on? I do not see the benefits overcoming the burdens. The benefits that I see, reducing a relatively small amount of pollutants from the bay and flood control going from seven to ten year flood. And I think that there would be much more burden. I do not see the benefits to the park. There's been a million dollar figure thrown out there, they're going to level the playing fields, they're going to put, put the paths back in, I think. And maybe allow for some irrigation, which hasn't really been a huge issue that I've heard of. The field is fine, I walk my dog there all the time, covered with kids and people playing, it doesn't need to be leveled, the paths are fine the way they are. This project, I am firmly convinced, will be a financial albatross for the town, and here's why. Caltrans is paying right now a capped amount to build the actual facility. The town has said there will be fifty to hundred twenty-five thousand dollar costs of maintaining it annually indefinitely. The engineers at Parks and Rec estimated that the facility would have a fifty-year life. There seems to have been no planning to set aside money for either the recommissioning or the decommissioning of this underground facility, which I imagine would be complicated, I'm no engineer. According to Bob Hellman, this could be a ton of money additionally every year to plan for what the heck they're going to do with it in fifty years. And you know better than I do how little money Atherton has. The residents signaled unwillingness to contribute more funds when they voted down the parcel tax last fall. I supported it, but there you have it. The town cannot afford financial uncertainty, let alone a long-term, untested underground facility that will likely cost us a lot more than we've been made to understand. And it's not just the dollar cost. You all have worked incredibly hard to get the Civic Center project going. I respect that, we are not there yet. You do not want to be in the position of having to defend expenditures on this water facility if you need to ask people for money or political support for the Civic Center. So I, I think we have enough information, I really urge you to consider alternatives and not put this in Holbrook Palmer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the panel? Can we step up?
Council members, Black McPherson, one-two-three Watkins Avenue. I spent seven years on Park and Rec and have been living in Atherton for almost thirty. I've attended many Park and Rec commission meetings, and you got community outreach, outreach in spades at the Park Commission meeting on March seventh. I've never seen a large group like that without both sides being represented. There was no speaker in favor of this, and many were echoing what Julie said, why even go forward with investigating this. There were many questions, most of which seemed to be either not able to be answered at the time or answered in a way that didn't seem satisfactory. The one I liked was, will it smell? And the answer was probably not. That's not very comforting, I'm afraid. I also have looked into the Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel Flood Management and Restoration Project, which the council has authorized a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the study. It seems as though it's going to take in all the efforts of stormwater and be done on a regional basis. San Mateo County has an obligation. In that project, you're going to be partnering with the county, Redwood City, Menlo Park, hopefully Woodside at some point? And collaborate with them on answers to these issues that are truly regional issues and not one for Atherton to answer. And I'm sure our staff is very well-versed on this, but it seems like the additional resources, and I just mean monetary, but the additional engineering and professional resources of being in a collaborative group with all those others would be extremely helpful in this project. So I don't think it belongs to the park, and I hope that Atherton will be able to join in with others as is doing in the canal and channel project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Grant Bowers. Well, first I want to thank many of you, I sent letters this week to all of you, and I received some great responses sort of acknowledging those letters. I was actually really, first time I've ever written letters to the city council, and it was nice to hear back from you. And I do recognize the amount of time and effort that everybody is putting into this project. I'm a resident of sixty-seven McCormick here in Atherton, I have three children. We play and use the park daily, whether we're walking, running, playing soccer, and they said they're going to level, level the playing fields. Well, we've been playing AYSO soccer there, works just fine. Grass is a little long, but still seems to work. Baseball field is going, I know not going to be touched, but it is going to be impacted with the construction traffic. So, you know, I just wanted to say that from our view, the idea of building this facility at this size and scale and the disruption that it would bring to our neighborhood, our community? And to really our crown jewel, the park, for two years is, in our view, something that's really not acceptable. For some, for, for a solution that I think can be solved through simpler methods, from flood control aspect, someone mentioned tonight, from a pollution aspect, whether or not pollution exists or does not exist. I'm not sure why we're putting the pollution in the park or pooling it there, but that seems to be the plan. I think the levels of pollution we have here in Atherton, there have to be simpler, green methods to bring that in check. My son was at the Park Commission, he actually brought the idea of bioswales. They have them at Hillview, Hillview Middle School. You know, these are simple ways, natural ways to mitigate some of the pollution effects. You know, some of the things that I, I think about, and we've been asking, and I did highlight them in my letter, but, you know, aside from why are we capturing these pollutions in the park? The, you know, is this a, what do we understand the realistic total cost of ownership for this project? Julie brought up, it's not just the monthly, or the monthly or the annual operating and maintenance. It's really what is it going to cost to dig this facility up fifty years from now and remove it, repair it, replace it? We haven't talked at all about earthquakes and what potential that could have, we have to go in and actually work on this project, tear the park up again. You know, these are all things that I hope we're thinking about. I was the, the person at the Park and Rec meeting that had mentioned that these projects smell. The first ten years of my career, I spent doing municipal financing for wastewater sewer treatment plants. Wasn't glorious work, but we had to go visit all of these facilities, and I'll tell you, they all stunk in some capacity, one way or another. When you got out of the car, you knew exactly where you were and what was going on before you even walked in. So, thank you for your time and your efforts, I really do appreciate it, and we spent some time together.
Thank you, Grant. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Art DiLola. I live next door with my fiancee, Dr. Olson, and I appreciate she's written to you, and I appreciate your feedback to her, and she appreciates it. I appreciate my neighbors, they've- I appreciate my neighbors they captured pretty much everything. The only thing I can add to it, because it was fantastically captured and it's compelling, it's devastating to my family, my daughter with disabilities. We use the park once, multiple times a day, all of us. And the other thing is just the organizations that are in that park. Little League, who I had a great opportunity to coach a playoff game at Willie Mays Field last year. And the soccer, the lacrosse, the dog walkers, the preschool. It goes on and on with thousands of people and multiple organizations that use this park, that love this park, and find not one bit wrong with it right now. It's beautiful. The trees, the environment, it's a gem, and we need to do everything in our power to protect that. And I think there are other alternatives to this issue, and I know that you'll get to the bottom of it with further investigation. I know we've gotten, we've already heard enough about the details to make a decision, and there's some very intelligent people in this community. And I know you'll get to the same spot. I hope you do. I beg you to get there. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Art. Next speaker, please.
Betsy Kowsey. And I just, again, I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate that you've gone to visit other sites and things. And I think because we have the Atherton Channel going through our entire town, that we need to take responsibility for it. And I'm glad to hear that the PCB levels and mercury levels are low, but my concern is actually pesticides and fertilizers because they are affecting our bay and the ecology there. I think we need to consider the health of the bay and how important that is for us, especially with sea level rising and other things that are gonna be coming. So I hope that the study will look at different alternatives. I like the idea of a riparian flood plain. I think that would actually be beautiful in the park, and it would be a wonderful educational opportunity for the public there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Any other speakers?
Hi, I'm Paul Quinlan, and I live on Maple. And I just wanted to, I don't want to be repetitive, but I wanted to sort of remind the council that this park was, you know, given to the town, and it was given for the express reason for, to use for recreational purposes. And when I was on the planning commission, they redid the ballpark, and we had multiple discussions about whether playing baseball in the park was enough of a recreational activity. And I can assure you that a 10-foot, you know, buried structure holding water underneath the park is probably not a recreational purpose. And Bill will probably tell me that, you know, that the conditions on the demise are probably no longer applicable anymore, but I think we should value the reason that Mrs. Holbrook Palmer gave the town the park, which is to use it for recreational purposes and not for, you know, to build a 10-foot structure underneath the park. And it is true that, as I think you said, you know, we'll get some details in the 20% engineering, but ultimately, if this thing is gonna be built in any kind of the form that it was presented, it's, whether it's a 10-foot underground structure, or it's nine and a half feet, or it's 12 feet, I don't think really makes a big difference. We don't think it's probably an appropriate thing to build in the park. And as well as the fact that, from a financial standpoint, you know, this is a long-term commitment that at this point, it seems like Atherton will be carrying on its own. And then finally, if this thing is built at the same time as the Civic Center, I don't know how I'm gonna get out of my house because there's not gonna be any roads available to me. So, anyway, thanks a lot for your help and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
Sandy Crittenen. To me, it's clear that this proposed project is way too expensive, regardless of who pays for it. Let's all acknowledge where Caltrans gets its money. You and me, the taxpayers. This project is not compatible with users of the park. It will only degrade our quality of life. It will saddle future councils with ongoing unnecessary expenses, and there are better solutions. Even if other stormwater projects are required and that they are more expensive, but they don't impact the park, I will support those, even if there's an additional expense. It's interesting that we've signed a $160,000 study to take care of floodwater that comes down that channel when it reaches the bay, and we want to put something upstream when it will be taken care of down there. Just a question. I want to know how many people here, at this point, oppose the idea of putting this in the park? Can you raise your hand? Okay, thank you. And then, all those that are in support of this idea, on this side of the white mark there, raise your hand. Thank you very much. I want to thank the council. I know you put a lot into this.
It was one.
Oh!
I'm not a local.
Okay. We have one. I want to proclaim that it's not a unanimous decision. Pardon? Is there more? Nobody will get rolled on the way out.
That's okay. You don't need to do that.
And I want to, I want to thank you. You do, you do a great job. We all agree with probably 95% of what you do, but I think this is one where we probably aren't going to agree. Save the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Any other speakers, please? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment and give it back to council. Members of council, do you want to talk about your trip to Southern California? Anybody wants to talk about it?
I will.
Elizabeth?
I'll start. It was a great trip, and I think it was important for us to all take the time out of our personal lives to make this trip, to investigate, because we were told that the city of Lakewood was putting in a couple of these, and it's all underground, and they're putting them in their park because that was where there was no buildings, and it was close to their channel, relatively close. But I sent a letter, I received a number of emails from people, and I think I sent a letter to most everybody that is here in response to their emails. And every one of you said very compelling reasons why we need to do more research on this. No decision has been made, although I think when we received this piece of mail, it said construction to begin was very misleading. I am chagrined that it went out and, you know, because it was misleading, and we are not going to start construction. We are investigating. And we went to Lakewood, and I came away with a lot more questions about our facility from seeing their implementation and comparing the sites. Their conditions are very different from ours, I believe, because they're in Southern California, but they have a lot more water flow. And even with a lot more water flowing in the channels, they have to do a little rubber dam in the channel to kind of back up the water and then pump it through and everything. And they said we'd have to do the same thing. I asked the questions about, you know, toxic hazards, because they have a lot more toxic pollution in their channel than I believe we do. But the questions I asked was, do we have a little, moderate, and unsafe amount? And the consultants couldn't tell me that. They couldn't say, yes, we, preliminarily, they think that we don't have any toxics. But you know what? If they had said, after they analyzed it, that we have an unsafe amount of toxics going through our channel, I mean, that would make me think about trying to do something to remove them before it went to the bay. But that's a big, um...
I'm sorry, can I get you to be, in Atherton? We're not the Lakewood project versus here, because we don't really know information related to your, your trip to Lakewood was?
Well, it showed me that they had more toxics. Their conditions are different, although they put it under their big park, and they kept their park going while they were doing it. Their facility was completely completed, except for the grass on the top. And that was gonna, the grass is gonna go on the top. The access, they showed the manhole covers, which was kind of surprising, that to get down into it. So, and then there's some pumping areas. So, very different. Flood control, we need flood control. And I don't think they needed flood control so much, right? They wanted, they wanted the irrigation water, right? They wanted the irrigation water because they have to pay for their irrigation water. We have our well water. We don't need the irrigation water to irrigate our park. So that was one of the reasons that they were excited about it. So, I believe, anyway, so, I think that the Caltrans grant that we were offered is something that we have to investigate. It would be irresponsible for us, as your representatives, to not investigate how that could be. We tried the Los Lomitas school. That didn't work out under their parking lot. The other location was this or the circus club for that park. So initially, I was very, I thought, okay, I'm gonna stop talking there.
I'm just gonna keep you in Los Angeles.
He's got me, he's got me.
We're back in Los Angeles. I have three projects.
Anyway, very different scenarios.
Who wrote the stamp? Do you just say California? Because then we could talk about Atherton.
Okay.
But since it's three projects, you're not sure. Bill, please. Or Rick or Bill?
Yeah. I thought that the trip was worthwhile because we've been talking conceptually for quite some time, and no one really knew what it was, so I thought it was worthwhile to go see that. You know, the mayor, we met with the mayor of Lakewood, and she was very enthusiastic with projects and with the professionalism that was demonstrated by both the construction crews as well as the designers. I thought that having not just the council, but also having Robert there and the person, the project manager that would be there, Marty and all, having the whole team there, everybody seeing the same thing, but each of us saw something different. And I thought that that was, it was very, very worthwhile and a great way to spend, you know, the day to do the investigation. They are, it is, it is different than what we would be eventually looking at. And of the three that we looked at, all three of them were different. One, one was, you know, something similar as Elizabeth pointed out, where they were capturing the water and then they were using it as irrigation, and they had to do post, post-treatment of that water so that that water standard is being sprinkled above ground. Another one, they were putting the water back into the sewer system. So they captured the water from a, from a channel, then put it back into the sewer system in the evening. And they said that the sewage group was very, very excited to get that water because of the fact that there wasn't very much water there with all the low-flush toilets, et cetera, these days. They needed the water to flush things down. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the bait facility that they had at the airport, Long Beach Airport, was gonna do something even different. The one that was leaching back into the, into the sewer system, the reason that they weren't percolating that down or reusing that water, they thought about percolating down, but because of the high clay content, which it sounds like maybe Atherton's park would have, is, is kind of what the preliminary comments were, that clay content didn't allow for the percolation that they felt was necessary. So that's why they were going back into the sewer system. So, I thought it was, it was, it was worthwhile time, and I thought that seeing it and seeing the people do it gave us a different perspective than just looking at it, and I would recommend us doing that again if we were gonna look at another major project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So, we commented about the trip and about outreach.
Oh, we were just gonna take one at a time.
So, yeah, we spent...
I got it. You guys can come back. You stay in Los Angeles.
We spent, we took, we, we spent 15 hours on one day to go down to Southern California and see these facilities. And I would say there were three things that I was impressed with. One was the mayor was so enthusiastic about it, I think principally because they were getting the water for irrigation, but there may have been some compliance with state mandates, but she was incredibly enthusiastic about it. Number two, that was impressive. Number two...
Everybody was. The whole staff, everybody.
Yeah, the whole staff. Number two, it was a huge hole in the ground. It was a really big construction project. It would be, you know, an eye-opener to anybody that would see it. And their people that used the park were so, particularly the kids, interested in this big construction project and these big trucks, that they took the seating stands that were used for the tennis courts that were next to this big hole in the ground and turned them around so that people could sit in them and watch the construction. And they were filled with people watching the construction almost every day. So it was a big project. That was number two. And one of them had just been finished. The construction had been finished, and both of the parks that it went into were recreational parks, 100% recreational parks. And they were being able to be used absolutely as recreational parks after this project went in. And they were used that way before the project went in. In fact, I would characterize those parks as much more recreational parks than our park, because I think our park is a hybrid park that has, while it was given to us by Ella Palmer as a recreational park, since then, I think the residents of our town have intelligently decided that we want to maintain the pastoral character of this park. So it's kind of a hybrid between a pastoral park and a recreational park. We get both the benefits out of it. And this project itself, from what we saw in Lakewood, would enable the recreational component to be maintained. There were, I don't think there's been a question about that. I have, I, I think in terms of the outreach, that personally, I don't feel the need to do any more outreach. I, I have a perspective on what I think about whether this is appropriate or not for our park. And I do think, from my conversations with staff, that there's value to get the remainder of the 20% engineering study, because there's going to be information that is going to come to us about our park and our channel that could be valuable to us in the future. But in any event, I would recommend that we not do additional outreach until after we get the complete 20% done. And then, if members of the council feel the need to do more outreach, that would be the time to do it. Personally, I don't feel the need for that.
Bill, can you make a comment related to outreach?
Yes, sure.
And Elizabeth, do you have anything?
From reading, from reading the letters that I received and talking to people that went to the meeting and also some of the things that I've learned about this, even on this trip, I, I think two, two things with regards to what's happened. First off, I think that there is a misunderstanding of what this is and what it will do and the aspects of it. And, and we need to get that information from the additional studies, and we need to get that out so people understand it, and we can then make a better decision. Secondly, as Elizabeth pointed out, there are a lot of people who think that it was trying, even though it was in the Drainage Master Plan, and we had talked about it at the public meetings, there was discussion that we were about to do something, and, and we kept it from the public. That was the tone of a lot of letters. And, and that, that has not been the case, but it has demonstrated that we obviously needed to do a better job of making people understand that we've been talking of this for a while. There is information that's out on the web, but, but I think that some of the information and some of the information that's growing... but, but I think that some of the information and some of the information that's growing, I think, needs to be clear and concise. And we need to answer some of the questions that were brought up at the Park and Rec meeting. There were questions on what about other locations? Why haven't you considered those things? Or why haven't you even thought about those? Or what's the situation? And I think that that's important too. No matter where we go, that we, that we can show the public that we're doing a very thorough job and we're using that information to make our, our mind up. But at the same time, we wanna educate the public on it so that they can, they may change their opinion or, but we would hear back from them. They may say, yeah, I'm even stronger now. But I think that we need to do a better job of communicating the facts concisely, answering the questions of why, and then also being, being clear with regards to the location decisions as well as, you know, all the, being as open as we are on the finances. Thank you.
Perfect. Elizabeth.
Outreach? I agree with my other colleagues and I think that's what I was saying about the car before the horse because I think it's really important to get the twenty percent design development to us, which answers some of these questions. Because if there are no pollutants that we have to clean, then I don't think we need the big scrubber underground treatment situation. If it really is flood mitigation only that we need and we do, it's obvious, but we've been dealing with flooding issues for many years. But I think we can do other flooding mitigation situations in a much more, less invasive way. And we don't need the irrigation. So, I mean, it's a, it's a process of elimination to me. But if the reports come back that we've got a huge pollutant toxic thing, then we need to think about, gosh, you know, what can, what else can we do here? So I mean, those, I can't make those decisions now. So I don't think we need any more public outreach until we get some more answers.
Thank you, Elizabeth. So as to the trip, I am, like, I agree with what everybody has said, it was worth going. There are a couple of things that struck me that we shouldn't sugarcoat about the trip. One, and Rick mentioned this when he said the trip, it was very disruptive.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not, you know, it was, we shouldn't pretend that it wasn't. You know, it, it was disruptive and it was disruptive for a good long period of time for the community there. They had a different situation and we lived in three sites. And there was more land, there were more, more other park space available at the time of the disruption. And just, we should acknowledge it. The other thing that, that I found interesting is, this is clearly the first time people are doing it. So they were, they were learning a lot as they were going through the process. And there was a lot of excitement that came out, some of the, in my view. Some of the excitement was coming from, you know, we're the first ones doing this to someone else who's paying for it. There's a lot of, sort of, a lot of, you know, excitement happening. As to the toxins, the answers that I got when I spoke to them was a little different than what Elizabeth heard, which was there's really, there are no toxins. And I think they were using a precise definition of that term, meaning there's nothing that has to be treated as toxic waste. You know, everything I got out just went straight into the traditional landfill. And so that was, they were pretty clear on that in every conversation I, I had. I guess those would be, those would be my comments about the trip. It was worth, it was worth saying, it was striking, this is large scale stuff. In terms of the outreach, there are a couple of things that I think I learned through this process. One is, we need to reconsider the way we're doing our outreach. Because in this case, the outreach was very effective, but it was not very effective, I think, to the city's efforts. I think that there are, there are a couple of residents who picked up on it and really drove it. And I think that it might be that it did us all a favor. Whatever we're doing for outreach isn't getting the message across. We sent out cards and I think most people, except me, knows sort of were surprised anything was happening, which means they're not paying attention to those cards. So I don't know the answers to that, but I don't think that it's, we should think that we're doing a good job of outreach, moving out cards to everybody who clearly doesn't get the job done. That was one thought. I, I also think that any outreach we do should recognize that if we do it something else for flood control, there may be significant impacts on the park. Because that's the other thing, it's not simply a this or nothing. It's a this or there's some other options that also would have effects on the park and people should, should be able to be aware of there's other options that are being reviewed or thought about. So other than that, I agree that we would get a lot out of the twenty percent study. I think we should take that in and then have a discussion about whether, what kind of outreach and if there should be other outreaches, it depends on what next steps would be for the metal plant. Thank you, Mike. Take one. First of all, I, I have to say, I think everybody up here would agree, that Lakewood was an incredible host and they saved taxpayers' backs and a share of money because they actually picked us up in the airport, drove us around and they actually touched us. So thank you Lakewood, that. It was a long, long day. But I think all five of us, including all the members, including all the members of staff and project people, were like sponges. How do, how do these three projects apply to what we see, what we see with Atherton? Can it apply? The prefabricated component of bringing in huge pieces of concrete to develop a retention basin versus pouring a retention basin on site. So we don't have a lot of the details that give us the ability to make decisions, but it gave us the opportunity to look at ongoing construction projects that were large in nature in a different area. But it gave us that exposure of when you're doing a thirteen million dollar project or ten million dollar project and you're considering three options, the retention of water, the treatment of water and the use of water in a park. It gives you ideas on what those potential consideration impacts were there and if they would apply to Atherton if we considered any one of those factors. What would, what would this do when we peel back and how would this impact Atherton? As Mike had mentioned, there were rushes to do things that frankly created some problems, which gives us some concern and hesitation on certain things because as we would apply certain things, if it was a project, we would have to take consideration pump buildings that were frankly too short. So little things like that gave us some reassurance that we have to think about every little move related to this project if there was a project, one, two, or three, if it's a retention component. The impacts are clear. The Mike is correct, I heard multiple times them saying. And actually, members of Caltrains, or Caltrans's leading staff actually were in attendance as well. They flew in to be there as part of the conversations because any questions that we had, they were willing to ask. We heard from neighbors in the project areas that frankly still, when they see somebody with a white hat, they go running over to them to talk about, hey, what are you gonna do about this? What can you do about this? And my impact, and they spent a very, they spent a lot of effort to make sure that the community that surrounded the project areas, the people were talked, dealt with and they were worked with. And it became an effort, it is an effort to try to mitigate what those impacts were to the people that surrounded the project. If it was, if it was construction vehicles, people, dirt, whatever it was, there was a voice. So we learned something that way as well. So I will have to say, I agree with my colleagues. I think that there's more information that needs to get out to us so that when we get the twenty percent design. Robert was thirty days in.
Two weeks.
Two weeks in. And, you know, he's coming from a larger city and coming into a smaller jurisdiction, but he was a diamond. Like a project of his scale would be something very comparable to what he has seen in Concord that made his experience in Concord help us feel comfortable enough that here's a guy two weeks in and he's treading water with, you know, everybody there and asking great questions, coming back with great feedback to help us, to help you understand if what was a project and what we would do. So again, I think that it was a well, it was the first time, I think, in our, in the history of the town that actually five council members and staff members went to visit a project area. We didn't do it for the channel, which was the largest project. But we felt it was important because of what this park means to everyone. And frankly, you have thirteen million dollars that you have to consider as well. It's a thirteen million dollar component. But it's not necessarily a gift because there's always strings. So everything that the public here has commented were exactly some of the concerns. I think there are less concerns in the jurisdiction like Southern California because we're really interactive. There may be less interaction in Southern California, but we, we will, we do have some similar feel.
Can I just add one quick thing about that Southern California? They have, they had all their agreements with multiple jurisdictions already to share in the ongoing costs. And there were multiple jurisdictions feeding into those channels just because it's so sprawling. And that's something that we don't really have with side, you know, no park, the county, so.
So as, as Elizabeth was mentioning, I mean, there were a lot of things that we became aware of which would not be necessarily applicable to the town in what we saw. We saw channels that were three times as wide as our little channel and other things. But it's, it's that type of exposure and what made this field trip so important because it brought back information, it brought back questions. And frankly, at the twenty percent design component, we're gonna have questions here for the consultants and staff and everybody else because information that we're gonna get is gonna leave more questions. And, you know, we want to make the right decision, but we wanna be informed. And I think again, Southern California was a dynamite trip for everybody. And again, well worth it for everybody. So that being said, I think I'm gonna go ahead and close this and move on to the next item.
Okay.
Yeah, Richard.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you, everybody. And our waiting, the person attending for this and thank you for your comments.
Keep sending emails to us.
Keep sending emails to Elizabeth. Thank you.
Us.
Well played, well played. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item number eighteen, which is the fire service physical review. And I see that that's George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, representative of council. On February twenty first, council meeting following comment of discussion, the council directed staff to obtain a cost and move forward with task four as described by the council and analysis of the range of options that might be open to the town to include a framework of the latco process, time involved for staff and public, an estimate of that cost, potential outcomes, as well as any other options that might be pursued by the town to include, but not limited to, those lead changes of agreements. Staff contacted Matrix Consultants, who was there that evening as well. And they provided the attached to your staff report scope of work and an opt-out fee of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Because I wanted some more clarity on that scope of work and the thirteen thousand five hundred did represent twenty-five percent of the original contract costs, even though it was technically within my authority to approve, I wanted some additional counsel input. So that's why I was back with you this evening to, to feedback on that scope of work, specific tasks. And if the scope of work is enhanced, there may be charges to that cost, changes to that cost. So to modify that scope of work tonight, I'd go back to the matrix with those changes. And the council would need to articulate an acceptable range for staff to execute a contract if desired or directed. If the scope is changed and the price changes as well, then it returns to council for further authorization. So for that, I'm looking for feedback on the scope and authorization of proceedings.
Thank you, George. Any representative of council have any questions for staff or George related to this topic? Rick, please.
I have two.
Oh, so when you do this, it's like, okay, I have one question. All right, we'll push on comments.
I might have one question.
Ah, okay. I have a question. Leslie? No questions, Elizabeth, question? Any questions?
I actually didn't really have a whole lot of questions. It seemed to be pretty self-explanatory. I, I guess if I have any questions, it would be related to the scope after the latco component and what would happen, that would be the information, what happens after.
After the report's done?
Yeah.
It comes back to the council and then you have an opportunity to decide if you wanna move forward. This scope of work with Matrix does not initiate any formal process whatsoever. So it comes back to the council and you can choose, hey, let's proceed this way or that way based on what the report said.
Rick does have a question. I do have one question. So the proposed scope of work would be limited to, I, I can read it. It says limited to understanding the latco and legislative processes. But those are two really different processes. And does, to understand the process mean they're going to inform us through this scope of work what we would need to do if we were to proceed with detachment?
Yes, because what we got from Martha Ayados in that email exchange is kind of the bones of the latco process, but Matrix is gonna put a lot more meat around that so, because there's a lot of issues that still need to be addressed.
I guess I have two questions. So, so they would, the purpose of this would be to inform us what we need to do in order to detach from the fire department? And what the legislative processes though, that, I thought that kind of had an origination with Elizabeth's comment at the last meeting, which I interpreted to be that how do we change Prop thirteen essentially?
Yeah, when I asked the gentleman, I said, do you know how to do this? And he said, no, you gotta know all about it. Well, I don't think he does.
So that's what they would do? They would, they would inform us what we need to do to change Prop thirteen?
No, I think, I beg to differ with the council over there, but I don't believe that Matrix said that they know all about the Prop thirteen process. I think they said they know about Prop thirteen and its issues and they are not aware of a legislative process to address it, but they would investigate that.
What the legislative, so what would the processes be in order to, I guess, amend Prop thirteen?
That's the clarifying point. This is not, we're not talking about Prop thirteen. We should get that out there, this is.
Prop thirteen is a constitutional amendment. And so we're not going to amend the constitution. But the implementation of Prop thirteen and the other propositions that have followed in its wake were done by the legislature. The formula for the county came from the legislature, not from Prop thirteen. So the legislative process would be, the legislature implemented this, they could go back now and revise it. Would they? That's, you know, that's.
So it wouldn't be to amend Prop thirteen, but it would be some legislative process to revise the allocation of funds, I guess.
To pass front distribution specifically related to Atherton, the fire district. Now, they don't know what that is, we don't know what that is. And perhaps, you know, at the conclusion of the study, they come and say, you know, this is what we would recommend you do, but we're not the best folks to do that. We need a lobbyist firm to engage this particular type of firm to assist you in that process.
Mike, I have a question that, that they're gonna focus on, just like you said, it's gonna focus on latco and legislative processes. Are there any other, any other options? And are they gonna look at whether there's any other options? I mean, for example, does the fire district have the ability to negotiate something? Is that off the table entirely?
I would think, I don't know. But I would think the fire district would be at the table down even after we would go.
I understand that, that there's a difference past.
Right, voluntarily come to the town and say, hey, let's negotiate something. I'm sure they could assist us with going to the legislature to refine that. I don't know if there's anything non-legislative that could be done.
I guess that's a question that would happen, is there something else?
So, but the fire district is under no obligation to have any conversation until we finish the study and say, okay, we really want to enter into further discussion. Which, when you say, okay, for detachment, it doesn't necessarily mean we've thrown it out, you know, the baby out with the bathwater. It just says, hey, we wanna look at this, we wanna start the discussion, you know, and we don't know what the options are, but we're, we're gonna start talking about options. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close our questions and I'm gonna ask any member of the public any comments.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I just ask you a question off that? Because if in fact there is a third item, which is what you brought up, Mike, which is negotiations with the fire district, that's not one of their options. Their options are understanding latco, which is detachment, and, and understanding the legislative processes, but it's not also investigating what you could negotiate with the fire district.
I think that door is already been opened with the fire district.
That might be more problematic than you would think. And the reason is statutorily, the tax scheme is set up and also what the fire department can do with the money. They can't just give it to us because it's, you know, we negotiated a deal with them.
No.
But there would have to be some quid pro quo. We're giving them something in return, like space in a building or something else they went from us. But in terms of just negotiating a deal because they've got too much tax money for us and not from other jurisdictions, I think that would be quite problematic.
So is there not a third option and that, I want to add?
Well, that would be related to the second option.
Not in this proposal.
Legislature might be able to say, you guys need to sit down and negotiate and then they'll inform you.
Well, I think, but if we, if we were to talk about.
That's not a question.
If we talk about detachment, then wouldn't that, if there's quote-unquote detachment discussions, then they would, I would expect they would talk to us. Because if the two parties could agree something and go to LACCO directly together, that would be something that, you know, would show that there's amicability and there, there's an agreement to continue moving forward, which would be the best of all worlds for all parties. But they don't have.
It would not be a financial, it would not be a financial arrangement.
Questions, yeah, question, I haven't described, but if that was a question.
That was.
At the end of, at the end of the LACCO process, yes, there's a legislative act to, maybe that should be the LACCO, not the state legislature, to redistribute property taxes through that detachment process.
Right, okay, any other questions? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and ask any members of the public any comments related to this topic, please.
Mike, representative one, two, three, Watkins, I want to commend the council for pursuing this as far as they have. And I would certainly say that I'm very supportive of spending additional money to go ahead with task four. And if nothing else, and at least you'll know more information for a possible negotiation. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close it and back to council. Who wants to, Elizabeth, you've been starting, how about you? Since you wanted to.
Well, I've got concerns about the proposal. Because I believe what we're really going to get for this $13,500 is kind of a boilerplate, uh, analysis of the LACCO process. Uh, you know, which, uh, we had a resident, uh, kind of outline it. Martha's kind of outlined it. I mean, I, I think there would probably be a little bit more meat on it, but it would be the LACCO process for detachment. I think that they would be, they will be very, very light, if almost not at all, on any kind of legislative, uh, process, uh, ideas or ways we could systemically change the formula that was set so long ago that skews the amount of money we contribute to the fire district because we have such high property values, high property tax values. It just, there's an imbalance of that and that needs to be brought into, um, reality, I think, that needs to be adjusted. And I don't think that this, no matter what they say in here, that there's enough definition to really give us, give me what I want to see about the legislative process.
Oh, let's do being in poll.
Go ahead.
I'm going to start by making a motion. I move that we tabled this discussion.
I'll second that motion.
And I'll comment on that.
Are we just, do we get that, is that in order? I mean.
The motion is in order, we can then discuss it.
We'll discuss the motion.
Okay.
Can't discuss it unless it gets a second.
Okay.
I didn't hear it second.
I.
Elizabeth, say it again.
Did you read the hand? Or did you say?
So.
I didn't hear it.
This is why I made the motion and, and I felt like I should have done this at the last meeting, so I'm glad that it's come back. Um, I think that it, there's two really big reasons why I think it's wrong to look at detachment. One, we are, we've got the largest project in the history of this town in front of us and we have to execute on this project correctly. It is a really important project that is going to change the town for the next 75 years. It, it's the biggest project in the history of the town and I think there are all kinds of aspects of it that we don't know yet. We have just, we haven't gotten into it. We've worked five years to design this thing. We've spent five or six million dollars and, um, we need to execute on this. It, it, it's a huge project for us on the council and for staff. And I think that this issue with the fire district is a distraction from that. If we look at detachment, we're going to spend a lot of time and resources getting into it and I think it's a complete distraction. That's my first big reason. My second big reason is I logically walked through it and really tried to look at, okay, what are we going to do if we detach? Well, we have three options. We can do our own fire department, we can contract with Redwood City or with Cal Fire. And why would we do that? We, we have excellent service from this fire district. Nobody denies that. Everybody acknowledges that it's excellent. It's just that we pay a hell of a lot of tax dollars for it. And there's nothing that I see that we can do about that because that is a function of Prop 13. And the fact that Atherton didn't spend as much money between 1975 and 1978 as would have been best for us in order for us to get a larger share of the 1%. Our, our residents are not going to pay any less in taxes if we detach. Everybody's going to continue to pay the 1% or 1.2%. What it is right now, it's just, it would just be redistributed and that's not a benefit to us. I mean, maybe there'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars Atherton gets because it gets 8% of our 1%. But it's too much of a risk to change the quality of service and protection that we get from this fire district, which I, it, I can't imagine it being better. I mean, I guess I, actually I could imagine it being better. I could imagine that there could be an emergency response unit put in the new civic center uh, that would enable, uh, a quicker medical response. But that wasn't, we suggested that to the fire district. It was their job to assess it. They assessed and decided that it wouldn't be an improvement. So they didn't support that. And I just don't see that there's some negotiations that would end up being beneficial. So I think it's a distraction and we should table.
So my, my, my reason, since he gave it, my reason for seconding the, the table we got it is that I believe that while I agree with our residents that what we, what we did with the fire fiscal services review was very important and that we, we really got a lot of good information from that. Um, this particular phase four will only give us a detailed analysis of how to detach. And I just, and, and the, the legislative processes is kind of a subset. And I just don't feel that that is a strong component of it and I think we have to approach it in a different way. And we've got the information we have, um, I just don't think we need to go down the road of the detachment, um, analysis. So that's why I think we should table this until a future date not set, not to be set, which I think we can do. We don't have to set a date, which is like a continuance, and then we can, um, uh, look at it at another time.
Okay, any other comments related to Rick's motion? Seeing no other comments, let's call the motion and hear the vote. All in favor of Rick's motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so let's go back to this.
Did I say name? That's right.
Name, okay, sorry.
You don't say, you don't say.
Yeah, no, any name, uh, no. So let's go ahead and further discuss it. Mike, I know you have an opinion.
Well, this, I, I think actually, um, a couple of things. Um, I think we all carry a lot of assumptions in our head about what's realistic, what's not realistic, what can happen, what can't happen. And actually, what Rick has laid out, there's a lot of assumptions in there that I don't share. And, and I think that shows the need to have some kind of document that tells us what the options are, what's realistic and what's not. Um, I'd also, no, a couple of things, I should, I should pull back and say, um, I, I'm not pointing this in any way at the fire district. They've actually had, they've got some new leadership in there and they've done some, some very, you know, good things at hands. Um, we should, we should acknowledge that, you know, the fire district is, is not really somehow acting badly in this process, they're not. Um, having said that, I, I, I heard Elizabeth say, you know, that we're overpaying and it needs to be adjusted. Well, let's figure out how to adjust that. You know, is there a way that we can adjust that? Is there something we can do, I mean, this is the path to get there? I also think that we need to keep in mind that there's an enormous opportunity cost to overpaying for fire services. Um, and that opportunity cost, we don't know what, where that could go, but there's seven or eight or nine million dollars that's being spent out of Atherton residents that's not coming into the town of Atherton, it's not going to the things that it might go to in the town of Atherton. Um, even, even other special districts that are not completely in the town of Atherton. But we have schools that are, are going out for special tax, partial taxes, special taxes, uh, that, that, you know, this may mitigate that. And so we don't know what the opportunity costs are here, but they're real. So when we talk about we're getting excellent service, I think the answer is that we're, we are getting fire protection services that are meeting our needs, but we are paying so much more for them that I'm not sure that would characterize that as, as excellent or outstanding. I think it's something we should just be aware, there's an opportunity cost to be considered when we look at this. So in, in my view, this is an important thing to do, is to keep moving forward. Let's make sure we know the options and we know what we're looking at. It's a process, it's not frequently used, um, and we should learn about it.
Thank you, Matt.
Can I just ask?
Are you asking a question or are you making a comment?
I just want to ask, uh, councilmember.
Well, if you want to ask a question, go ahead.
So in your mind, you think that, uh, going forward with this, uh, analysis that Matrix is going to provide us with the detachment process is going to give you the answers? I mean, because you're agreeing that we're paying too much and that we need to maybe adjust that in some way, shape or form?
I'm agreeing, yes, I think we need to know what the options are. And I think all I'm trying to find out is what the options are. And I think we are short-sighted to say we're being overpaid or we're being overcharged and there's nothing we can do about it. We have to accept that condition.
I don't think, did you?
So I think what this does is it's our best effort. Well, then I would love to hear your specific idea about the next study we gather, the next thing that would tell us what our options are. So I think that's what this is, this is what I'm going to say, these are the options.
I think we have a misunderstanding.
Okay, what do you think, Angela?
I don't think that LACCO, the LACCO process will give us, uh, options. I think that it will just identify the process of the mechanics of going through a detachment procedure.
I think that part of what, I think you read what this does, it does talk about, uh, the strength of the application, the initiation of process. They talk about what, you know, what the odds of it are.
I guess.
So, you know, it's more than simply laying out a process. And it does give us information that takes, and in the absence of this, I would go back to you and say, what's plan, what's the plan to try to get the result you want? Which is to adjust the spending as you identify.
I think that their initial, um, uh, study that they, the fire fiscal review identified, uh, the cost of services pretty, uh, much in detail. Uh, it shows how much we are overpaying as a baseline and, you know, there's a percentage that can be extrapolated from that. And, uh, that would not entail the detachment process. But I think the legislative process is the better way to go, uh, to have, uh, it, the percentage adjusted. And that, I, that's where I find this particular proposal weak.
So, um, I'll chime in a little bit because that was to be, uh, my, uh, proof that I've been going on six years. I obviously have an opinion and, um, obviously, um, there has been, there is concerns related to what the jur, what the town, where, what it's taken us to get to this process to even get to where we are with item 18. Is we've been following the steps of this process to be informed in how we can make decisions or make decisions. And we've been also being slaughtered on the other side by the propaganda component telling us what we can't do. Everybody's telling us what we can't do. Um, but what we've recognized through this process is that there's a lot of money that's left on the table related to our service. And, you know, probably to date, that's a $9 million surplus number and that number will be growing. I cannot agree with council member DeGolia's comments in, in the sense that this process takes time and this will take time. But this is consultant's time, this is a process that will take time for any council. Um, we've been working on this overall process for several years now, even to get to this point. But to table this topic and say that the most important thing to deal with is the civic center component. And it, and it is, the civic center component's a huge and a very important component. But this is also an important component to the taxpayers of Atherton. And we constantly get, have been told, you can't do anything about this, you're not responsible. But it's also interesting to know that the fire district isn't acknowledging or having board discussions related to this topic on willing to even discuss the topic on a $9 million to date number. So what we've been told is, is that the jurisdiction and agency responsible could initiate and start a process to say, hey, you know what? They're overpaid. As I said previously, highly unlikely, but that's not what the benefit taxpayers of the town of Atherton, which we have a higher degree of responsibility to because we're not diluted by three other jurisdictions. So I don't think we're going to see an assembly member, I don't think we're going to see a senator walk in and say, gosh, you know, I had nothing to do and I'd watch the board meeting and I really want to go ahead and implement a process to, to adjust numbers. I believe that we have a two-tiered type of approach. And I would say that the district is well aware that there's a two-tier approach because they've already started lobbying electeds. So we haven't started lobbying electeds because we've committed to a process. While I agree with councilwoman Lewis, there is a second component, which is a lobby component. But there is a component over here, which is to move forward to a detachment component, just to have a conversation. Because they don't need to come to the table, nor do they really want to come to the table. And as, um, Bill has mentioned, they don't even have the power at this point to really say, hey, that is a process through the elected component. And in order for us, oh, we can sit on the sidelines and watch the figures grow, grow and grow. And we are still going to be less than 10% of the district's responsibility. And I believe that we do have a fiduciary responsibility. As the elected components for the highest degree of population that we serve is our, our responsibilities to our taxpayers. The district doesn't necessarily, the intimidation, all the fingers and all of what we can't do doesn't work for me. And actually, I believe we should be stepping up with the taxpayers of Atherton. Because even though we keep being told, no, 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 that there is a benefit as we walk down the road. And, and it's not an expectation, I don't think anyone here is expecting that we would, we would, if there was a reallocation component applying, that we would be expecting that whole reallocation. But we also have, as council member, uh, Lembrus has mentioned, the schools get a portion of that. There's, there are other people that would benefit by a proper allocation and our taxpayers ultimately receive that benefit. Right, so, so, and, 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 so, so I, I mean, it's a process that we're committed.
Yeah.
That this is an option on trying to help, just like the storm water treatment facility. We have to get information, we have to move, in my opinion, move forward to establish more information. The district, you know, is very much aware of what we're doing, you know, um, they have a representative. representative sitting in the audience this evening, they know they'll be told within minutes of what we're doing, and that's fine, and that's what our expectation is. We've been upfront, and, you know, we want to get to a point where we're going to have the discussion related to service. We don't know, like the water treatment facility, we don't know what the end of the road game is. If it's creating a fire department, the full detachment from the district, the district has the ability, if there was a detachment, to be at the table to provide service, like everybody else that would provide if we chose to, hey, that would be the opportunity, like all the special communities, the consolidation of services that occur throughout the peninsula. You then have the ability to sit down with the district and say, provide us a bid for services, this is what we believe, and put it out to a bid, who would be willing? And it may be that, in fact, the Menlo Park Fire District would be the only service provider that would be willing to. They don't have a lot, they don't have a lot of effort to have to do that, because they're already here. So it's not as if they have to say, like, for example, the city of Brooklyn City would say, guys, well, we don't really have facilities, we still don't even know what the process, if we were completely removed from the Menlo Park Fire District, because we don't know what the LAFCO component will require us to do, but we do know that there's a lot of meat on the table that will be part of that discussion as well, because what has been our contribution, and how long have we been paying these large figures? We're just getting to a point, we're starting to notice that that figure's nine million, and it's greater. And the district has got other avenues, and they've talked about the bifurcation component. Well, we're worried more about Atherton, so I do believe it's, you know, in our interest to move forward with this, and that's my two bits, in a nutshell. So can I?
Please. All right, so my comment would be, first off, I felt that when we first passed this and said, do the study, that doing a study and not understanding, if you don't like the results of the study, or you have further questions, what's the next steps you can take? Cutting it short, I thought was foolish at the time, and sitting here now and doing nothing will lead to exactly that, nothing. And I think that I'd like to know where we are, what the options are, the number, the excess is continuing to grow. Yes, the service that they give us is very good, I enjoy working with the Fire District on the CERT program, and the disaster preparedness activities that they support here, they do an excellent job for us. But I do think we need to take this step and understand, you know, what the options are, and understanding those options also allows us perhaps in the very near future to sit down and have a conversation. And so, that's why I supported it, I supported it from the get-go, I supported it in the last meeting when I thought we had made a decision, but now we're making the same decision again.
I'm just concerned that we're going to get just bogged down in the LAFCO process, and we won't continue to push on trying to, you know, change it systematically, if we have a legislative.
Well, I agree with you, but I also think that there may be an obligation on the Fire District's part to try, I mean, they're, I mean, they are obviously very much aware of what revenue is going into the district at this point, maybe for them, last year they didn't know, because they don't analyze the information, but this report is pretty informative, and so therefore, you know, having a discussion related to this document itself, and what they believe the process should be, or what they believe their involvement in this process should be, shouldn't an outreach? So, with that being said, let's, let's go ahead and get a motion on the table to approve the recommendation of moving forward with task four, and if, yeah.
I move that we authorize the city manager and the city attorney to move forward with file negotiations and issues of contract, and fast forward for the Fire District study.
And I will second that motion, and any further discussion? Can I get a call? All in favor?
Aye. In the spirit of working with my colleagues and convincing.
And a vote? So, breaks a vote. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to item number nineteen, Middlefield Road.
Robert Avadi, Director of Public Works. Back in your February council meeting, you received a presentation on the 65% for the Middlefield Bike Lanes Project. Since that time, we've received the 95% design documents. Those have been presented at both the public meeting and to the Transportation Committee. We have Nadia Boson from Inner West to provide you a presentation on the 95% design, which you've received, and we're open to receiving comments from the council.
Thank you, Nadia, go ahead.
That's right, I'll hear me. So, one of the items that was discussed for the 95% comments that were submitted to the consultant, is extending the northern limits to the actual limit, the town limits. Currently, it's at Jennings, but it's not at the actual town limits, that's one of the items that was discussed. We've also been communicating with Menlo Park, open discussion last week, we had a more recent meeting on Monday, just to discuss what the latest 95% was, so that they're aware of what the plan is, and get their opinion of it. So they are, they're going to give us their requirements that will be put into the spec, so that when the contractor has bid, we accept a contractor, they know what steps the town of Menlo Park requires, such as traffic control and permitting of runway. Some other comments that were brought up were restriping crosswalks. Currently, the existing crosswalks are Fair Oaks Lane, Marsh Road, Lockins, James Avenue, and Snow Avenue, Linden, and Ravenswood Avenue. At these intersections, they're being restripped, and there's concern that there are intersections that weren't obviously stripped, are not going to be proposed for final conditions. These are also going to be restripped for final conditions. For the dash bike lanes, these are over intersections that have sight distance issues, so Marsh Road and Ravenswood Ave are intersections where those bicyclists have to transfer to area with difficulty, so that's why they have a dash at those intersections, across the leg that, because it's a T-intersection, it's across the leg that is intersecting Middlefield Road. The other two locations, James Ave and Linden Avenue, have the gates at that approach, so this is so when people are approaching the intersection, they see that there's a bike lane that they're approaching, and then even when they get to the gate, they still have issues seeing down the road, so this is a way of indicating that there's a bike lane, and that's why it's at these four intersections.
That's why it carries through the intersection?
So, the other treatments that we're having are the bike boxes as well, and then the sheroes. So, we've indicated to the consultant that the town had issues with previous sheroes, and that it was recommended to have paint for the sheroes. So, that's something that's going to be incorporated into the 90, was incorporated to 95% comments to the consultant, and the rest of it would be thermoplastic, they were recommending skip, slip-resistant perform-through thermoplastic. This is something that was actually used for the Menlo Park project, for the Facebook intersection improvements. They gave an example of that with specs, which was the pre-marched, was a grip, was just an example, but that's just one example of many different resistant perform thermoplastic. Menlo Park used a very similar one, it's not the exact same company, but it's.
Will it be raised?
For the thermoplastic?
It's raised and be gloppy, like the ones we have now?
No, that was based on how many, also how many layers they did. So the one that they did was just installed incorrectly, like you're talking about the one out here.
Oh, they're all over.
Yeah.
They're terrible.
That was installed incorrectly, so that was a combination of bad construction.
But what we, what we had agreed was that they would be painted.
They are painted, so the sheroes are painted.
It's not just the sheroes. We agreed that we were not going, we were, Marty, that we were there, we agreed that we did not want those green boxes and other wayfinding signs to be thermoplastic, that they would be painted.
Are there currently issues with the?
Yes, there are, and bicyclists and.
Yeah, they don't like it, even the.
And neighbors have come here at this very meeting and argued.
Can you back up to a picture, back up a picture?
Sure.
Are you talking about the green boxes there for the bike?
Yeah.
Because those are at Oak and Middlefield now, and those are thermoplastic.
Yeah, I know.
And they're not, they're actually sheets where they're melted onto the pavement, they're very thin.
They're thin.
They're very thin, yeah, exactly. They're very durable, but they're not like the, they're not like the ones out here in the road here.
Type of application?
The application's.
Can you actually get non-skip paints?
That's what the example that the consultant was proposing, because he is aware of the issue, and so that's why they were giving us examples of what would work for this type of treatment. But the application is very important, I think they did multiple coats at these intersections, so the, yeah.
The shero you're talking about, yeah. Not at Oak.
I don't think, they have, is not a thermoplastic thing, that is some other kind of a.
The sheroes that we have? That was just poor installation.
No, that is thermoplastic, but much too thick. It was not applied correctly.
It's going to give a bad rap for thermoplastic.
But there is the thermoplastic at Middlefield and Oak Grove at the Complete Street Project that was completed months ago, and those are sheets that actually are melted onto the street, and those are very thin and layered, but very durable, and very slip-resistant.
You know, it's just, it's just a change in what we talked about, and, you know, we indicated that it wasn't, while the paint can run off, the thermoplastic is required in high-volume streets, and none of these streets are high-volume.
Well, Middlefield's certainly high-volume.
But the cars aren't going to be driving over that.
No, but that, those boxes out there at Oak Grove and Middlefield are the sheets of thermoplastic. We always, what I remember hearing is the sheroes, we want to make sure those are painted moving forward, but these, I didn't, I thought we, I thought the council liked what was installed in Middlefield and Oak Grove.
Well, I'll have to go take another look at it, but if it's thin, and not, I mean, because the sheroes are like, they're like a quarter inch.
No, everybody acknowledges those were very, they were cordially done and installed.
I think that obviously we're a little cautious with thermoplastic, so, I mean, if in fact, there needs to be an adjustment, we can reconsider, we get what you're saying, but our attention's on it, so.
Right, Nadia, we get it.
So, right now, there's this thin thermoplastic at Oak Grove, which we can go look at.
Yes.
Is, and I, on your Oak Grove slide, everything's grayed out, does that mean there's no work in this project to be done at that intersection?
Since this was recently done, yeah, that was part of the concept level where we decided to not redo the intersection.
So, can I make a suggestion? This is coming back to the council?
Correct.
File spec award, between now and that meeting, if you could take a look at the thermoplastic installation there, and then provide some actual feedback.
Well, the bike pet committee has seen this, so, which, you know, is unusual.
They did see it.
The council seeing it before the committee was recommending.
Nadia was at the bike pet committee in January, so.
Or they didn't make.
It was 65% at that point.
Nadia, go on.
The November meeting, I also remember, I thought that you brought up Menlo Park as an example, that you liked the installation at Menlo Park, so that's why we ended up talking to them and finding out what they used, and then discussed with our consultant to make sure that we were matching that for the green striping.
Well, I think it makes sense to kind of match what Menlo Park has done, because we're kind of sharing this.
Well, and again, this is what's out there currently at Middlefield and Oak Grove, so. But, you know, whatever council wants to decide, between now and 100%, correct.
We'll get it before we run to that.
Yeah. And then other items that were mentioned was ADA approaches for the curb ramps, some intersections have two ramps way across Middlefield and then to the adjacent side street ramp, so this is something that has also been brought up to the 95% submission for comments to the consultant. And, yeah, the last comment was for Marsh Road, so there was concern that, why isn't there a green bike box? This was part of the concept level, this was initially part of the design, as you can see, they did a turning movement to see if it was safe, and you can tell that the trucks actually turning right into overlapping that bike box and part of the left turn lane, so it's not safe for bicyclists that are waiting there to take a left. So not only did they move this from the concept level after they did their preliminary engineering, they also moved back the existing stop bar so that it would be safer in the long run, and.
Does that shorten the approach?
Yeah, but one of the comments also is to, because the PD brought it up, is to extend the left turn lane by removing the hatch at the end of the lane, so that it's extended in the back. So, that was.
Yeah, Bill, please.
So, at the end of Ravenswood, and there are some areas where, you know, the bike box continues after the intersection, is that, in this situation, is that because of the fact that there's the merge road?
For Ravenswood specifically, there's an island.
Your first, well, I want to just ask it slightly differently, your first image that you showed up here had stopped at Ravenswood.
Yeah.
It stopped, but, but your, your, yeah, L-15 shows a bunch of activity after Ravenswood.
It's just to, it's within the town limit, so this is just a rough limits showing the intersection, so.
As we go off like a.
It's the approach to the intersection too, so in order to do the left turn bike box, you also have the lanes that need to be altered to approach it as well. So it's just restriping, I think it's within 50 to 100 feet after the intersection, just to bring up the striping to that intersection.
Well, why would you have a bike box or the hash lines after the intersection, after you're over across the road?
The green squares?
That's the.
Doesn't make any sense.
We're talking about the.
Those hash lines?
Yeah.
They go, they go south.
I understand, no, I understand, thank you, though. There's a, there's a small island for the eastbound right turn at Ravenswood, that dash line is to cross the intersection and also cross the right turn yield pocket, so that it's safe for the bicyclists to go the entire direction to the final destination, which is the lane past the yield. So that dash line crosses the intersection, crosses that island, and then brings them safely to the final bike lane. So that's why it's continued past the intersection.
Okay. Right? Yeah, this is an island, this is an island.
This is just an overall view of the plans which we have in front of you.
Yeah, the island was just very light, you couldn't see it.
Yeah, it's, there's an island out there, and it makes it just safer to finish the path, and then the schedule. Do you have any questions?
I just saw a reference to Menlo Park, are there any issues with coordination with Menlo Park, or any other things?
So, they have their own concept for that intersection, they need to have budget funding for it, so it might take a while for them to actually implement their idea, so they want to discuss it with us, they will be presenting their idea with cooperative agreement at some point. In the meantime, they want to give us their requirements in order for us to have a way in order to finish the whole left turn lane, oh, sorry, the left turn bike box, because part of it crosses their jurisdiction. So, we're working with them to find out what their requirements are, and then also just to discuss openly what their concept is, which isn't finalized yet, they still have to do more design work for their design, and that might be important. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, so when you talk about, okay, we're going to be compatible with Oak Grove, for example, Oak Grove, our portion of Oak Grove, that's one thing, the Oak Grove portion down that road, down Oak Grove, people hate that.
Down Oak Grove, so with.
If you go down Oak Grove, what Menlo Park did, all the way down. If you go down Oak Grove, what, what Menlo Park did, all the way down towards, towards El Camino Real. That is not very popular.
Is it because, is it consistent throughout Menlo Park's project?
No, it's not actually. It was, it was a different implementation. And so if you're saying they're going to be consistent with Oak Grove implementation, I mean, this is one of the things that Mr. Fisher was here talking about. He was talking about that implementation, not our intersection. He was talking about there.
Yeah, we're not dealing with Menlo Park then.
And you're saying we're putting laminate down that's consistent with the Menlo Park implementation?
No, our Middlefield project is what I was saying before, is we're, we're being consistent with council approved for that intersection.
Just at the intersection.
Correct.
Yeah, I guess it's a question. I, I look at the, the green boxes that lead up in the bike lanes to the different streets. And you have the boxes, if you were northbound, they're on the east side of Middlefield. And if you're southbound, they're on the west side of Middlefield. When you, when you come to an intersection, there's a series of bike boxes basically to announce to the bicycle that, that a cross street is coming, right? But some of the images have different numbers of bike boxes. I mean, some of them look very long. So I ended up counting them. And some of the bike, some of the streets have thirteen bike boxes when you approach the street. And some have, most seem to have nine.
The approach.
Yeah, so I just think we need to be consistent. We need to have the same number of bike boxes and. Um, so I didn't, I, I didn't understand. The question was, I didn't understand why the difference.
It was the approach to the intersection, not through the intersection.
To the approach, not through the intersection.
Okay, so that, I can bring it up to the consultant. That needs to be consistent as well as the spacing for the image of the bike which leads to the intersection. That was one of the comments that we had, so it's definitely something we'll reiterate.
The signage?
Yep.
Uh, are these newly created signs? Are these generally accepted sign practices? They seem, I think they're kind of quite creative.
They're based off of NACTO, which is.
Are they NACTO?
NACTO, yeah. It's, the bottom one is a modified version of a NACTO sign, but it's been used previously. And that's one of the, they gave us two options which are very similar to each other that have been used in other projects and they based that off of NACTO, yeah.
So will people understand? Just because they're, they're, they're quite.
Different.
You know, yeah. Turning vehicles, you'll do.
I think in general, just my opinion from doing the outreach meeting, a lot of residents in general, we need education in this area.
They will need.
Even with just having the green bike box, but that's something that is being brought up into a lot of towns. So moving into another, or driving through another town, it's still something that needs to be.
It'll have a learning curve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing no more questions, I've been asking whoever's in the public. Would you like to comment on this item? Closing comments back to council and Rick has his comment.
Okay. Uh, I think the only comment I have is from a conversation with people in Lindenwood, particularly the Linden homeowners association. I got two comments about the green squares that are proposed to be added in front of James Gate and Linden Gate, which they prefer less rather than more. And they don't think that they're helpful. So I think that if there's a reason, and it sounds like the reason from your previous comment is because when there's gates, you don't have as much visibility. So there's obviously a judgment to be made there.
So, so my comments are, you know, I just, I'm, I, this is, this is really going to change Middlefield project. So we have to be really clear that we have to acknowledge that Middlefield Road is heavily traveled. It's a main transit border for cars, bikes, and pedestrians. And that, you know, we have a responsibility to try to do all we can to, you know, make it as safe as we can. We've got one stoplight at Encinal, um, but it will forever change the look and feel of many of our historic landmarks, you know, the entrances, exactly what Rick was saying. The entrances of Linden and James and, you know, those are always very bucolic and that Linden is just a single road coming. But it is a very dangerous situation. So we just need to know that this is really going to change the look of Middlefield Road. And so, um, I, I think it's the right thing to do. I'm really glad we've got a grant of funds to do it with, you know, because that means that B pack from C CAG felt that this is a very dangerous situation and we need to do it. But we're going to get pushback. We need to, we will get pushback. People will not be happy, but they will get used to it. That's my comment.
No, I think we've seen this several times. And I think part of what I struggle with is what Elizabeth just said with that. It's just the nature of the project, right? And it's, it's going to make a splash on Middlefield. You know, it just is.
And creative signage and colors.
And having said that, I think we've gone through quite a process here. We've seen it several times. I think we're, you know, uncomfortable.
I'm just, I'm glad that we're moving it ahead. I'm delighted that we have some additional funding so that we can do the whole thing and then hook up to where the county and Brooklyn City will be. And, uh, you know, I do understand the situation with Linden. That is a dangerous intersection with cars coming out. There's, there's near accidents almost all the time there. Cause cars can't see and it's single lane coming in and out and people are going in at the same time somebody's coming out. Even though there are signs that say, stop here before you go, people don't do that. So I think that having some sort of visual approach to say, this is, by the way, be a little more cautious here is, is, is the right thing. And James is a very busy street. People don't go through it as much as they could. They shoot down Hawthorne or Heather to get out to James because that's the quicker way out, because that gate is a little bit wider. Whether or not it's needed at James, I don't know, but I do think it's definitely needed at Linden.
Thank you, Bill. I am also pleased that we are where we are. I, I'm still hopeful that we've been engaging, um, the Park Fire District if they love our planes, the city of Menlo Park and the county and the policy that that way, you know, everybody can say that they, that they saw it and gave us what their technical bill. But can't wait until the hundred percent. All right, let's, thank you very much.
It's interesting.
It's always interesting, yeah. All right, so let's go ahead and move to item number two.
Yes, Trace is going to load the PowerPoint right now. Um, just kidding. Before he was a receiving file of the media budget report for fiscal year seventeen eighteen and requests us to adopt the budget amendment resolution for necessary adjustments. You have my staff report, um, in here. The only, um, thing I'd like to note is that there's just a, a three, three adjustments for a total of one hundred seventy, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars, mainly one-time adjustments in the departments of city council, building, public works. There's an increase of revenues of one million sixty-six thousand. So our net, um, projected year-end fund balance is going to be sixteen million fifty-two thousand, three hundred thirty less our reserve requirements. Our fund out, uh, projected unallocated fund balance is ten point nine million. Also within the staff report is just our update of the, uh, we reduced allocation of the CIP due to the parcel tax elimination to two point seven million to account for remaining, um, funding available. One notable highlight is that, yes, we did receive an award, a grant to the San Mateo Transportation Authority uh, for seven hundred thirty-three thousand. That would help augment some funding, um, proceeds to, uh, from the parcel tax. Uh, we will augment and staff is recommending a augmentation to shift maybe three hundred thousand to copper improvement fund, possibly for the civic center and additional hundred twenty-five thousand to the, um, drainage improvement program. With that, that concludes my staff report and staff are just requesting the council to adopt the attached resolution. If you have any questions, I'll.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions for staff?
So on page eight of the staff report, you've got a table identifying CIP projects.
Yes, sir.
Because of the San Mateo County Transportation Authority grant, is that number that is shown there for the bike and pedestrian improvement plan being reduced?
Uh, yes, you're referring to the capital projects where I have the estimates of the one point two eight million? Yeah, uh, one point, I mean, a hundred and thirty-five thousand is what we've expended. But the estimated, just estimated cost for the projects, one point two eight million. That's the cost. So of that cost, seven hundred thirty-three thousand is a grant, um, just including what the budget, uh, estimated budget would be.
Could you attend the bottom table? Bike pet current year, five-year allocation, one point three four five?
Oh, that's what the total amount was, um, based off of the current CIP program of eight point six million. That's what it made up for over the five years of what we were going to allocate through five years of that program was one point three million. So, uh, that, that was reduced, if you see the chart, uh, to two point seven million of the five-year allocation. So we're allocating only two point seven million, um, in our CIP. So the difference of, um, because of that is five point nine million is reduced.
These are actually the costs, the grants, the revenue side as a show.
And I was. Correct, yes. I'm sorry, and I was referring to the, the table chart showing the cost estimates of estimated projects that are taking place, um, in the near future.
Uh, any other questions for Robert? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and ask any members of the public if they'd like to comment on this item. Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close comments back to council.
Above our needs will be directed to the Civic Center project. And my comment to the city manager, we never voted on that. Um, that's, that's our intent. But we don't know what projects and what emergencies may come up. So it's not a hard and fast rule and that we need to, you know, we can't put that down in these staff reports as if it's a hard and fast. We will be approving the budget every year and we'll be making the decisions. And hopefully things will be going away, going along the lines that we want it to so that we can do that. But we may be hit with an unexpected expense or something and we're going to need to reconsider that. So, so, um, so I, I just, I think maybe that amendment should be, it's preferred, but it would be, it would be re-verified periodically or annually.
Uh, any other comments? Can I get a motion to, uh, proceed and file any of your budget? And with the budget amendment of one fifty-seven, four, four, four? And a second? All in favor? Any of those? Let's move on to item number twenty.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Marty Heneman, project manager for the Civic Center project update. We have four items for your consideration this evening. And the first one is a receiving file for the cost model manager project schedule. And regarding the cost model manager, that has not changed since your last month, the February twenty-first meeting, where the total project cost is still less to be fifty-three million, five hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred sixty-four, which includes our contingencies. Uh, the second item on the first one is the project schedule. As you'll hear in a few minutes, uh, the project plans, specs, and estimates are a hundred percent complete. And the construction documents are ready and they're ready to be issued for a public bid should, should the city council approve that tonight. And then to go out the bid to pre-qualified general contractors that the council had done last summer. And also ba, based on the, uh, project schedule, bids will be received on May twenty-second. And then the lowest responsive bidder will be recommended for award to city council on your June sixth, uh, twenty-eighteen meeting. So things will be coming up very quickly. The next item, number two, it is authorize the city attorney to review and the city manager to execute a cost-sharing agreement with the California Water Service Company as part of the water main relocation required for the Civic Center project. And a little bit of background on that, um, for this agreement, uh, Cal Water initially said, this is a development project and the city would have to pay for everything. And then they said, well, we have an easement in Dingelspiel Lane. And, and so if we want to move out, we would have to pay for them to relocate that. And when we looked into it further, we found out they did have an easement, but they never recorded it. So in other words, it's null and void. And so they realized that. Uh, and so we looked at, looking at different segments of how we can serve the water needs for the Civic Center project and the surrounding. And at first Cal Water was saying, well, we can serve the project with the existing water line service. But our engineers were sure would disagree with that based on some water flow tests that have been done in the last few years. So ultimately, after numbers of meetings and negotiations with Cal Water, um, and actually working then ultimately with their district manager, we came to the agreement that on your, your, your plan that you have in front of you, part of your attachment three B, the, the segment in blue there, the solid blue line, which is about four hundred and fifty linear feet, Cal Water would be responsible for paying for all that because we could require them, because they did not have a record easement in our PU to do that. So they realized they really had no recourse there. However, the dash purple line, in the purple line going to Maple, that is actually something that we would require as far as the fire service and the new hydrants we have to put in through Menlo Fire. And so that's something that the cost of the project would have to bear. Uh, however, through, again, negotiations with Cal Water, and it's in my staff report, uh, because by linking that completely through from really Far Oaks to Maple and a continuous line, that would require, that would actually provide a better water service, better pressure flows for the fire hydrants and so on. And also would not have no dead end spots in it, so the water quality would be much better. And so from a reliability and a maintenance standpoint, uh, Cal Water decided to agree to pay for that dash purple line, split it with us. And so that's the deal in front of you today, is that they would pay for the, the blue line solid. We would split fifty-fifty, the dash purple, and then the solid purple would be paid by the town. And we believe that's in the best interest of the Civic Center project and the town in, from a fairness negotiating. And I think that was a, a pretty good deal for all, all parties. One thing in the agreement that I want to touch on too is on page four of the Cal Water agreement, where they agreed to reimburse the town, uh, for a mountain act to exceed. There was a blank there. And I just got that this morning and they, they said that the amount they would be willing to go up to is two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that's based on some calculations that their engineers came up with like four hundred dollars linear foot for, for the, the lines that they have to install and pay for and splitting the cost in the dash purple. However, after we reviewed it and I talked to the city attorney, that leaves it pretty open that what if the project cost goes beyond two hundred and sixty thousand, sixteen thousand? Is the town going to be on a hook for all that? And the way it is written, uh, that we would be. And the way it is written, uh, that we would be. And so between now and this morning negotiating with Cal Water, in fact, about twenty minutes ago, I just heard from the district engineer who heard from their legal counsel that they agreed to put in some additional language and that I actually worked up with the city attorney earlier this afternoon. And they've agreed to that. And if, if you'd like, I can read it to you and then read it into record if you want. And so again, it's on page four of nine of the Cal Water agreement. And where you have, uh, the not to exceed blank, it would go from not to exceed two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, period. And any cost incurred above this two hundred and sixteen thousand, comma, parties will negotiate in good fair, good faith to share these costs based on the formulas in this agreement. And we believe then the formulas we're talking about is per segment. So again, any cost over on the blue line, they'd be four. Any in the dash purple, we would split and anything on the, the other one, we would be paid for. So we think that covers our, our costs if, if there are. And hopefully there won't be, but I think that's, bottom line, it comes out to, we're gonna split the costs if there are any cost overruns. So we think that's a fair deal for the town. The Cal Water has agreed to that if the council is receptive to that. So if there is, um, so I'm, I'm open to any questions you might have on the Cal Water agreement. And if not, you know, that'll require, uh, council, um, to approve that, have the city attorney review and then the city manager to execute agreement, that cost sharing agreement with Cal Water.
Okay. One quick question. They agreed to negotiate in reasonable whatever to, to go to that formula, why didn't we not just ask for? Did we ask for that formula and they, their fallback was a little agree to negotiate because it's a, that's a bad symbol.
That came from us and basically, remember, we went from, we were running out to pay for everything.
Right.
To where now they're paying for really amounts to most of it, um, or more of it than, than we do. And this was based on the formulas that we had laid out in, in, in advance. It seems, it seems to be, to be equitable that if, if their segment for some reason is more expensive, they should pay for that.
No, I'm completely, I'm saying that, I guess I'm playing more, what they, they didn't agree to that. What they agreed to do was negotiate in good faith along that basis.
No, they, they agreed, the, the language that, that Marty just read was the language Marty and I came up with this afternoon. Because we thought would be something that would be palatable to them and, but fair. Because if it's not fair, you know, they're just gonna walk.
Please, Marty.
So, council question? When I look at the agreement, page two of nine lays out the three segments that you're referring to. Segment one, which they clearly are saying they'll take all responsibility for. Segment two, where responsibly divided fifty-fifty. And segment three, which the town takes all responsibility for.
Right.
And that's in the whereas. That's not in the agreement language. Then I would think that that, uh, that, that the financial responsibilities outlined in segments one, two, and three, which maybe you call the fee schedule. And in the paragraph you're referring to where the blank was, it refers to a fee schedule, which I'm not exactly sure where that is. I don't see something called a fee schedule, but I'm assuming that that covers what's identified in segments one, two, and three. Because it looks very clearly laid out there. And I, I'm, I would think that you would refer to that. I, I don't, I don't know what you are directly referring to when you said any costs above this will be shared on a formula basis.
Let, let me explain our, our concept and what they agreed to. Number one, the, it isn't a whereas, this, this, this came from them, not us. And the whereas has, have a lot of information in them, but they're incorporated in paragraph one. Recital's a term for after hereby incorporated in the enterprise agreement as it always set forth for reading. So we're, we're comfortable with that and since they drafted it, it's ambiguous, they lose, we win. The fee schedule part Marty was referring to, they, they finally sent us today this little fee schedule. It's like a one paragraph thing that says basically, the engineer's estimate is for the, for their two segments, this amount, two, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. My point was, yeah, but what if the price of pipe or labor or they hit a rock and have to do a change order or whatever? What if that changes slightly? That's why we went back to the, the cap is not okay unless it's still on the shared basis that we had before.
So, so my, my thoughts are, and I appreciate that you, in the first section, you've incorporated the recitals because the recitals can be wishy-washy. But, but I, you know, I would just say, as opposed to say there's cap, I would have thought that we'd says, you know, in accordance with, with number one. Section one, where it says that what they've already agreed to is fair and accurate and they're gonna pay for their thing because in the recitals, they use the word all. And that's one of the things I hummed out when I spoke with George earlier, is that, you know, our staff report and at the start of this, the recitals say all or half. And then, and then you hit section three or four, whatever it is on, on, you know, section three where it says not to exceed. And we're gonna say, we're gonna sit down and negotiate, that means that they, they may or may not exceed. You know, it's, 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 it's up in the air. You know, I think that if they've agreed to pay half or all, then it's exactly that way. And there shouldn't be any wishy-washy words that leave it to doubt.
Their point of view was they're going to put cap in there because they think they should pay zero. Now, I think the staff has done a remarkable job of negotiating to where we are now. A lot of it had to do with legal threats, some of it, a lot of it had to do with Marty's, you know, you, you really wanna make this a public issue? You know, you don't even have an easement where your pipes have been running free for god knows how many years. And so when they came back to us, I think we expected a long time ago to have this cap number. Understandable that it is not, it wasn't perfect to have that, that number put in there at the last second. But that's what that fee schedule was basically their basis for that number. We can go back and say, you know, let's keep negotiating or whatever you wanna do. But, but from the staff's perspective, we were, I think we were convinced that this was a fair and equitable, equitable way of at least ensuring that the cap is not a true cap. It's a cap subject too. And so far Cal Water has, once we got to their chief counsel and their, their district engineer, they've been what I would call pretty reasonable.
Right, yes. Once we got to that level, because before that was just gridlock, we weren't getting anywhere. They, they were saying, you pay for everything and we're, we're not paying for anything. And we said, well, that's not acceptable. And, and so for months, we weren't really getting much. And I believe this is a really good deal for the town to move forward. And, and this, this last language that we entered, we just, you know, right into the record there, I think covers any kind of cost overruns that might happen down the line.
Any more questions for Marty on this? So I'm gonna ask any members of the public. No members of the public, I'm gonna close about a comment on this item alone. Back to council. Any more final comments related to number two? Can I get a motion to go off right to the manager and execute cost sharing that you were gonna have outlined by Marty just previously? Just to California Water Service.
Seven.
Can I get a second, please? Boy, we're a little slow at ten thirty. Wow, it's not like us. Um, all in favor? Aye. Marty, move on to number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Number three is to approve the civic center plans, specifications, and estimate and for the bid documents. Uh, you should have received an email today, I think, from the city clerk, uh, that all these, all this information is posted currently on our website. And there's two volumes of plans totaling four hundred and fifty-seven pages and two volumes of specifications, uh, uh, totaling two thousand two hundred and thirty-six pages. And I'd be happy to go through those this evening if you'd like, otherwise, uh, just take my word. I think they're all, they're all good. They're all good and they're ready for you guys to approve. So with that, you know, we, we would, we require council approve the, the plans and specs and as the bid documents. And then the next item would be to authorize staff to go out the bid, uh, to the pre-qualified general contractors. And just an update on that, uh, the general contractors, when you approved that in July of last year, we had five pre-qual. And just recently, we heard from Exile Construction who dropped out of the race due to, uh, workload. They're, they're booked up for the rest of the year and so they withdrew from the competition. So we're left with four, but they're four very good contractors and so it's exciting to move forward with that. So both those will require, um, motions and approval by the council.
All right, so let's ask Marty, any questions related to number three and four?
Just to enter, uh, council member, let me just switch in. It says lateral stiffness more than eighty percent of raising verticals.
Sorry about it. The, the next step of this process is you said, we'll get the bids back on May twenty-two of the council meeting.
Two, six, right. And then, uh, also you'll probably be hearing from the city clerk about scheduling, uh, groundbreaking ceremony sometime in June. And right now, we have a placeholder date, of course, it's still just a placeholder, June twenty-seventh, Wednesday, but it's also, also, of course, dependent on your availability for that, so. So those are the next steps going forward.
Perfect, thanks, George. Any other questions for Marty on these two items? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask any members of the public. Seeing none, I'm gonna close about the comments, back to us if I know anything. Can I get a motion to approve the civic center plans specification and estimate, yes, so we don't need bid documents and authorize the advertising public bids and pre-qual.
So, and wave, and wave three.
I'm jumping out of my skin.
And wave, perfect. All right, can I get a second, Marty?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it's a real milestone, so it's exciting. Thank you.
Day isn't over. Congrats, Marty.
I have a feel so important. Okay, um, I went to meals on wheels today and, uh, yeah, you didn't do it, Mr. Mayor, anyway. It was great. And they gave me some raffle tickets, uh, they're, uh, selling some raffle tickets. They're only gonna be seven hundred fifty-two tickets and they're gonna give away five prizes, so your chances are, you know, one in a trillion. I'd really like to have you guys take a couple and, uh...
Buy tickets to give the fire?
Oh, no, that's my, that's my report, so.
No, no, this is mine. Okay, so anyway, so it's twenty dollars for one or fifty dollars for three, okay? And I only have this many, okay? The other thing is, I'm, I'm gonna pass out a, um, letter from the three congress members. And issue Jackie Speer and Jim and that having to do with, uh, the, um, FAA and requesting, uh, the FAA to give us an update. Because the FAA has been in a little, uh, disarray since the new administration took over and they've kind of gone a little dark on us at the San Francisco municipal. And so what we're trying to do is, they, they're, they're doing this as you can see, but, um, maybe at our next, um, council meetings, we can, uh, agree on a letter that we would write, uh, and submit to the FAA from us to, and to our congress members also, so.
Thank you very much.
So how many raffle tickets does anybody have?
Um, I'm also going to be submitting the board packet for last night. If anybody has any questions, please do not hesitate to talk to me. Any other council reports or comments? Future agenda is known, solid comments, fine, solid comments, very common. I knew you were gonna, that's why you came in. We're waiting for you.
You hear about this feature?
You're the only, only group that meets later than my groups. So I, you've got a spot for me here at the end, but, you know, there was three more people killed this month in the schools in Maryland. Seventeen last month in Florida. And I just think that, that the ratio that the governor of Florida suggested of one police officer for each thousand students would, uh, would mandate seven more police, uh, the force for that, in that ratio. And I, I'm not saying that that's the right amount, but I think more than one, if, if you have one, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Yes, yep. In the Maryland one had a, a school resource officer in, uh, on, on staff there.
At that school.
At that school.
So Florida. No, no, Maryland, man, and he killed two.
No, I, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, well, it would. You gotta extend my time for the interruption.
Commander, I used to be his school resource officer at one point.
Well, I just think that the parcel tax should be reinsta, reinstalled. You should exempt the people over sixty-five years old. You should put in at least four to five more police officers that I assume would be covered by, well, how much is parcel tax?
Well, we can, well, we're gonna reinstall it, reinstated, we're gonna raise it.
Well, you can re-instate it. I'm not advocating.
No, 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 Barbara, especially if you're gonna exempt everybody over sixty-five. I mean, ah.
Hey, the school, the, the school district does it, and I think that the, it will assure you a two-thirds vote if you exclude the people over sixty-five.
I think we're gonna have to exclude them over seventy-five.
Well, you can make that decision, but if you don't, if you don't do this, I think you should get a report from the police of those incidents that have occurred in the last year that would lead to a prospect of some, uh, problems. And I don't know what those are exactly, but I'm sure that there's, each school has its own challenges. And I just, you gotta ra, measure the significance of them to see whether they could lead to violence.
I bless you.
So I encourage you again, and I, I've got you on my schedule for next month. So don't, uh, don't feel like I'm gonna let up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, any other members of the public, Barbara? Uh, seeing none, I'm gonna close about the comments, most adjourned. All in favor? Day most, stay here.